All right.
Good gracious, we follow. We thank you for this beautiful Lord's day. We thank you for the blessings of life. I will remember for you today, which is as you leave God and rest you, that everything we do will be pleaded in your eyes. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I thank you, Mr. President, on the United States of America, and to the Republic, for wishes made one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And we would start off with the roll call. Sherry's here. Curtis is here. Dennis is... No ordinance. That's right. He'll be here in a few minutes. Okay. Tyler's here. As soon as you're here. I'm here. Sherry is here. And our listeners are here. All present. At this time, I want to entertain approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
I think it's time to move it second. All those in favor, signify by a say a "aye". Those who say "aye", motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes for the April 10th, 2023 Town Council meeting.
Just as a technicality, I'm assuming that you also voted in favor?
Yes.
Because there's only the three of us, I guess, at the moment.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to three. So I...
Again, approval of the minutes. Do we get a motion?
How much is it?
Motion and second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by a say a "aye". Moves, motion carries. All right. First thing on the agenda is the square end of our new City Council. I would like to have them come up now and congratulations to Mr. Gene Phillips and Mr. Franklin Schuler. And his time is mandatory order. The county judge's office is going to do our honors tonight because our judge just went up retired. So maybe it's going to do the honors.
I don't know where Judge Brown is going to have to stand or...
Probably right up here. Right up here?
Yeah.
Tell me where you want me. There you go. It's all about the photo walk.
It's...
We're just...
Yeah, go here.
You want me here?
You...
All right, that's good.
Is this on?
No.
No, no.
So I'll do the Bible or you want to do the Bible? Do one at a time because you gotta repeat after me. So, hand on Bible, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear in front...
I do solemnly swear in front.
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution of the government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of Town Council...
The duties of Town Council.
On which I am about to enter...
On which I am about to enter.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Raise your right hand to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear in front...
I do solemnly swear in front.
That I support, protect, and defend...
That I support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the government of the United States...
The Constitution of the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties...
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Town Council on which I am about to enter...
Of Town Council on which I am about to enter.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Thank you very much. Most fortunate and...
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He's signing it.
Nope, nope, we're good. Thanks, Mandy.
I'm doing good. I want you to join me there.
Oh, please. The heart breaks.
Next on the agenda is the... First, we have public participation. Do we have anyone here that wanted to speak about the same thing that we had a while ago? Public participation? So you want to bring that up now? Why?
Sure. Sure, absolutely. So we had a public hearing that was scheduled for five o'clock this evening on a proposed RV Park coming into town. And unfortunately, we have to reschedule that public hearing because there were some technicalities. First and foremost, we had to get a staff report from a company called Calvin Giordano and Associates. They're the company that SafeBuild, who our building official is with, they all sourced to them. We just got the report on Friday. So we really haven't had a chance to review the report. And then secondly, we wanted to make sure that we had our newest members of the council here. So we're gonna end up rescheduling that public hearing for the RV Park. All of the adjacent homeowners will be notified, just like we did. It'll be in the paper, and they'll all get noticed. It'll probably be June 5th, but don't hold me to that. So.
Okay, do we have anybody else, public participation, before we do our... All right. That being said, I will turn this portion of this over to you.
You want me to do informational items first?
Pardon?
You want me to do informational items? Or you want to do those? I can do them.
Well, did you want to do the square again? You gotta reoffer informational items first.
Can I get through this first?
All right. All right. Our next Town Council meeting will be May the 15th at 6:00 p.m. here. Our Unified Bronson Day is on Saturday, May the 20th at 10:00 a.m. This year, it is going to be circled around the lot area and doing a just a fix-up date there. So please, invite anybody that can. We would appreciate all the volunteers we can get. And Town of Bronson would like to welcome our new utility clerk, Ms. Bethany Brimming.
Hello, honey.
And we didn't get a chance, but...
Yes, we did. So Ms. Beth is also our... What is her...
Our new part-time administrative assistant.
We're moving right on along. Okay. All right. Ms. Sue, you now have the floor.
Okay, so next up on the agenda is a selection of mayor, vice mayor, and committees, since now technically I take over the meeting. So I will entertain a motion for Town Council Mayor.
Actually, a nomination.
Sorry, nomination. Thank you.
I nominate Robert Parton for mayor.
You don't need a second for a nomination.
Don't need a second?
Under Robert's rules, no.
So we're just...
So you recall for any other...
Vote. Okay. I'm sorry. I was waiting for a second. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, so I will call for a vote for mayor then.
Wait. Did you call for any other nomination yet?
Oh. See, I don't know what I'm doing. All right, so any other nominations? Okay, we'll call them. Okay? Any other nominations? Okay, so we'll vote on each?
Yeah.
Just vote on each one?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we do... Let's take a roll call then. Let's start with Mayor Parton. Sorry, Town Councilor Parton. Counselor Jorgez.
Over to Kim and I vote.
Yes.
Robert.
So...
Mayor for...
Yes.
Counselor Parton.
Okay. Counselor Franklin Schuler.
What do you say?
This is for Robert Parton.
Say what?
So yes or no for Counselor Parton for mayor? Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
No.
Okay. Counselor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Phillips.
No.
Counselor Sherry Schuler.
No.
Okay, now we're voting for Franklin Schuler for mayor. I'm gonna do a roll call again. Counselor Jorgez.
No.
Counselor Franklin Schuler.
He is.
Counselor Parton.
No.
Counselor Phillips. For Franklin Schuler.
Yes.
Counselor Sherry Schuler.
I think maybe Rob, with all due respect, because you're voting for him through a position of values. I think you have to respect it. And I want you to know, not only my opinion, I checked it for you.
Oh, no.
Because I didn't think so. It's coming up. Did you hear what he was saying?
No.
You got a time. Knowing that you had that, you can do the vote on your own time, or you can just leave it be and the mayor will say it all, since it was something else.
Whatever happened to the resolutions, the mayor with all his...
We haven't gotten there yet. We're gonna have to go back to the drawing board with some of what we did with the committee. We weren't able to get it on the ballot. So I figured new council will kind of revisit. The last council did not approve of that change, just to let you know. So. So you want to go back through?
I think you have to. I think you have to go back once.
Okay.
If that doesn't result in a different result, then you've got a tie, and Mr. Parton remains mayor unless and until something happens to change that because there's no more mayor.
Okay, so this time for the roll call, tell me who it is you're in favor of. Counselor Jorgez.
Counselor Parton.
Counselor Franklin Schuler.
We vote, like, the first. We vote for Robert?
Tell me who you're... Nope, you're just telling me who you're in favor of for mayor.
Franklin.
Okay. Counselor Parton. Counselor Phillips. And Counselor Sherry Schuler.
I say.
So the statute quo remains, Sue.
So what?
There's no other way to overturn it.
Can I ask a question? Why is... Do she act out the thing?
No.
Yes.
Is it because they're related?
It's because they're related and because the position of mayor carries a compensation in excess of the other council people. So under the statute, then there is something to gain on behalf of being the mayor. And anybody who's related under the anti-nepotism statute cannot vote.
Okay. I was just wondering because it didn't work out that way when... When Jason, you know, was related to Parton, and he voted for...
To be honest with you, I was not aware that Jason was related, and that you have to be related to a certain degree. So I don't know. This is obviously...
I was just wondering.
But you know, in all truth, I did not know that they were related.
Well, I thought that I'm... So you had to know. But I thought that...
I didn't know it when he was elected.
Huh?
I didn't know it when he was elected, that it would be an issue.
Well, that kind of stuff happened when Mayor Roberts was up there. It was kind of like rotating Earth. And that wasn't even happening. I'm not understanding something here.
If you...
You're trying to say that Counselor Schuler can't vote, that would be saying...
I'm not trying to say it. I'm saying it. And it's not me saying it. It's the state of Florida that's saying it.
State of Florida.
You can't vote to give an advantage to somebody who's a direct relative of yours. It's very, very clearly ensconced in the statutes. I'm telling you. If you want, I'll send you to... I said if you give me an email address, I'll send you to statute if it remains in court.
I don't agree with that. That one's... Is that something that's always there?
Yeah, at least as far as I know.
We've been along all the time. That's always there. But it was happening, you know. It happened.
You know, I don't know. You may know, and you may be right, but I'm not going to debate with you about it. I only know what happens at today's day. If I can know her voting from an attorney's point of view, or her father, where they say, "Oh, I'm doing wrong. I'm perverting what I'm supposed to be doing, which is keeping everything in line and legal." You know, what you're saying is you're not happy with the state statute?
No.
No, that's not what he's saying. He's saying that he's not happy with the fact that Jason nominated his uncle to be mayor, and nobody stopped him. That's what he had a problem with.
Okay, and I accept that. That's all I can say. And I'll tell you one other thing. I wasn't aware that they were on the...
Well, he ended up...
No. Where you taking...
Oh, man, you and I go back to voting. I knew I would go there.
That's the past. Let's look towards the future. One thing that we can do, I'm not... I don't live in the city yet, but I know about the legalities and elections. If anybody's interested, what we can do is set up a petition. You have the minimum requirement signatures, and we can pass for a referendum on a special election. And we can request it ninety days from now, do a special election to pass the ordinance that the committee already did, so that the people can go ahead and elect a mayor and be done with it. Or that way, we avoid these issues and family and all this other stuff in the future. You, Parton, anybody, myself, anybody can go ahead and put themselves as mayor candidate and run for mayor and be done with it. That's the... What we've done, the committee did, is ninety percent done. I forward you the information from another small town that is similar to us, that has a strong mayor position that also is elected by the people. So all we gotta do is I'll go ahead and type it up, and I'll have it ready by Friday in the petition. And I'll go talk to Curtis and all the people that I know that know about people, get enough signatures that are required, and go ahead and do the referendum.
That's all I just needed. It's your photograph, right?
Mr. Wong, what number? What number is that? I don't have it in front of me, but I will make sure. Sue, I know we discussed this. Do you have the statutory number?
I have one. You have one?
You put it in here?
I gave it to you. If I don't have it, we will get it to you. Right there. I've got it.
What number do you see there?
I've got it.
It is chapter one clear. We call it the anti-nepotism law. Do you know that?
So why would we have a...
That's correct. We have two votes for one and two votes for the other. Correct.
I mean, can I say something? Before, when everybody else knew that Jason was Robert's nephew, and it wasn't nothing about no nepotism then. I tell you what happened. What I think would be the nepotism part of it is Jason has a right to nominate who he wants to be the mayor.
The cousin.
And he has a right to vote for who he wants to be the mayor. But what I think where the nepotism came in at, he nominated Robert, and Robert got the nomination, and Robert turned around and made Jason the vice mayor. Now, that was definitely nepotism then.
So we voted on it.
Yeah, but the... I don't get how it was on... It still wasn't right. It was a vote. I mean, everybody voted on it.
Right.
Yeah, but everybody... Not even the vote now. That's what we...
You not nominated you. I nominated you. That's a difference.
No, I didn't know nothing about it either. I mean, it was brought to our attention by a concerned citizen, and then Mr. Wong got it.
So Mr. Wong, what do you recommend we do from here?
Mr. Parton is still the mayor, and we need to proceed with the meeting.
Okay.
And if there's any other action...
Technically, he is not the mayor. Technically, he is not the mayor.
Yeah, he is.
Now, he can be appointed back to the mayor, but he officially, right now, gets another talent. You're right. He's the mayor.
Right. And technically, he is now a councilor. The council took over the proceedings...
Right.
In order to elect a new mayor. At that point in time, what you can do is, he's right, he can be appointed back to the position temporarily, so that he can sign the checks and pay the bills. But technically, we don't have a mayor right now.
Yeah, you do, because he serves until his successor is qualified and seated. There is no successor that was able to be qualified, so he continues to serve. That's the rule, so that you don't have these vacant vacancies, and municipal business can continue. Where you're getting your ideas, I don't know, but I have fifty or so years of this kind of stuff, so I do have a degree of familiarity.
Clarification, if I might? Can you reference the Florida statute so that the rest of us sitting here with their cell phones can see exactly what it is you're referring to?
I looked it up. It was Florida Statute 112.3135, and it says, "Prohibit a public official from appointing, employing, promoting, or advancing or advocating the appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement of a relative." It does not prohibit two relatives from being employed within the same agency.
Not nepotism, what do you mean? They call it the anti-nepotism statute. And then again, I didn't even trust myself on this, because I knew it would be a touching subject. I talked to the Committee on Ethics, to the attorneys there, and discussed the situation with them, anticipating that this would come up, and they told me that it would be a violation. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they're wrong, but I don't think so.
You just don't carry it, that none of this came up. It was done on rehearse.
Even if that's true, how does that change the statute? I realize you're bemoaned, and that's what I'm trying to say. You can't go back and change history.
They didn't enforce it, and they're in town now.
The only way around it is a petition for a special election to pass that. We worked on that, on that stuff on the committee, and I brought it up to you, Sue, that we'll do this. This was the nice way of giving it to the city council for them to do it. If they don't want to do it, then do it my way, and I was going to force it, the referendum, and do the ordinance as a referendum. I was giving them the option to be nice about it and let it be put on the ballot, so that they can go ahead and put the mayor up for election. But that didn't work out, so now let's do it the human way, and we're going to go ahead and do the referendum, special election.
You can, absolutely.
Yes. All I need is just the minimum amount of signatures, and I'll find out from town tomorrow what the signature is, and I'll get the signature, so we'll look at the referendum.
You are exactly correct. You are exactly correct. Okay, good. Flag your question there, Paul. If you do it like that, where, say, me and Robert just have... We'd be able to resign from the council or run for mayor?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
And you'll be adding another seat.
Right.
Technically.
So you're gonna be adding a bad county, is what it's like.
Mayor, I mean, Franklin, the other issue is, and the main issue of why council did not do it is, if you and Parton resigned on the day you were elected official, and neither one of you got mayor, you would also no longer be council, which would then lead to we would have to have another election, because we currently do not have enough to fulfill cities. So whoever runs for mayor must resign, and regardless if you got it or not, the day that those votes came in, you are no longer on council, as a mayor or as a councilwoman. So it leaves a gap, and that's the issue that the council had, is because it would create a huge gap.
And again, that's a Florida statute. That's called the resign-to-run law. Again, that has nothing to do with...
You must resign.
You know, I'm kind of like Jim. You know, I'm the kind of guy that I don't hold my peace with. And I think if you're gonna go by the statute, I think you have an election that was in the charter, that you have an election, the second, two, ten, self, general, every other year. You see what I'm saying? But you changed it, and you had an election this year in April. So you... All of what I'm saying is, that would have had... That could have been like that, but it would have had to be by the electors. That's the people that's in the audience, and me, and you, and they're all the electors. But you just changed... The council can't change the charter. It had to be changed by the electors, and you did that same thing. You changed the charter because it suited you. Now, because I might have a... Me and Sherry's on the council, it's all kind of dust now. But before, when the elder, the king, folks on the council, just never put... Why is that?
Let me address that. So first and foremost, the change from September to April came at the urging of our Levy County Supervisor election.
But she don't run nothing up here and from...
I understand that. I understand that, but she asked all of the municipalities in Levy County.
That don't make you do it, because she asked you. She asked you to jump in the river. You gonna do that?
Well, she asked the council, and the council agreed to it, and we passed that by ordinance.
She should know how... You should have told her. Y'all the expert on the charter, expert on the Florida statute tonight, you should have told her, say, "No, the electors have the decision there, not the council."
The issue also came in with that, though. The reason is because Pammy runs so many elections, it was creating issues for her.
That's Pammy's fault.
But in turn, well, no, that's not our fault, because Pammy does... Pammy does the favor for the city, and so what was going to happen probably was that the supervisor elections was not going to assist with the city with doing the election.
Look, you can't go by the book one minute, and the next minute, you don't go by the book. That's not right. I don't get what you're trying to explain. That's not right. You can't go by the book on one issue, and on the next issue, you don't. That's not right.
I have a question. Right here, it says, "Violation of the nepotism laws are punished with adolescent years with a fine of between $50 to $1,000, imprisonment for no more than six months or more."
You're absolutely right. That's what it says. Point B. You can make a complaint if you want.
I'm just saying.
That's why we're not violating.
I've got a question. But the mayor is in now violating.
Again, if that is true...
That is true. If he's here...
Do whatever you have to do.
If he's here and his nephew is the one that appointed him, which Sherry did not even do. Sherry did not even appoint Franklin.
I understand what you're saying. I know exactly what you're saying. But if you feel that violation has occurred, I'm just trying to talk you out of it, and whatever you need to do about it. And I'm not arguing with you.
I mean, you can do stuff about it, but that's the past. It's better to just look forward to it, and instead of doing the town charter, because the town charter does require the people to vote on it when you're going to make a change, you can do the ordinance where you make the mayor position an elective position by the people. And that way, the city council had the opportunity to go ahead and accept that ordinance, so that we avoid doing all this public spectacle that now has to be... that we avoid doing all this public spectacle that now has to be done, getting the signatures, paying for a special election, and all that, in order to, to get the mayor elected.
What? I've got a question. Does, does Tammy run this council?
Not right.
I have that. This is the first.
She asked all of the different municipalities to change their dates to April, so that would make, it would make it more unified. Everybody would know that the first Tuesday in April was going to be the, you know, the time for all of the towns to vote, so eventually, you know, everybody will understand that that's the case, because before, all of the elections were at different times. Ours were in September, some were in March, some were in April, they were all over the place. She, she asked the council, granted, the council could have said no, but she did ask the council, and we went through a first reading, a second reading, and passed that ordinance.
Let me clarify something. She asked, and she solicited that we do this, not because she, we were violating the charter, and said, eh, what the hell, go ahead and violate the charter, because there's something in the statute that says that you can, without amending the charter, change by ordinance the election dates. So it wasn't a charter violation, it was inconsistent with the charter, it's not what the charter says, but it's something that you can change by ordinance, you don't need a referendum, change charter to change the election date. Again, that's the law, you can argue with it, or you can not like it, but that's the law.
Can you give us what, uh, what statute that is, or where you're coming from?
Well, I could, I could certainly find the statute, not at the moment, because I don't have.
You're talking like you already know what the statute is.
I do know what it is, but I don't know every number.
Well, it's way into the end there. You don't know. You don't know.
Oh, I did, well, you know.
It, it, it ain't a harm in not knowing.
Hold on, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to hear the reading of the statute again, because I was, I was sort of under the impression that nepotism is when, um, you know, like, the supervisor and your daughter, you know. So I, I just want to hear that reading.
You can read the whole one.
Yeah, but why you have a daughter, not a cousin?
Yeah, and what, what.
And that the case is.
What Mr. Warren was saying is because there is a change in pace, that is the problem, that's what he said. But the, the problem, the problem that most of us have is not with that, it's with the fact that this has happened, and nobody says anything. That's the problem.
But the change in pace would not affect Sherri.
Well, not just the changes, do you want me to read the whole?
If you want.
Yeah, read it.
So, it says, in this section, I'm going to skip it.
And where, and where are you reading from?
It is Florida statute one one two dot three one three five. It says, "Public official means an officer, including a member of the legislature, the governor, and a member of the cabinet, or an employee of an agency, in whom invested the authority to file law, rule, or regulation, or to whom the authority has been delegated to appoint, employ, promote, or advance individuals, or to recommend individuals for appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement in connection with employment in an agency, including the authority as a member of a collegial body, to vote on the appointment, appointment, promotion, or advancement of the individuals. Relative, per purpose of this section only, with respect to a public official, means an individual who is related to the public official as father, mother, son, daughter, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, first cousin, nephew, niece, husband, wife, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, stepfather, stepmother, stepson, stepdaughter, stepbrother, stepsister, half-brother, half-sister. A public official may not appoint, employ, promote, or advance, or advocate for appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement in or to a position in the agency in which the official is serving or over, which the official exercises jurisdiction or control any individual who is a relative of the public official. An, and this individual may not be appointed, employed, promoted, or advanced in or to a position in an agency if such appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement has been advocated by a public official, serving in or exercising jurisdiction or control over the agency who is a relative of the individual. Or if such appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement is made by a collegial body of which a relative of the individual is a member."
So I think what I'm understanding is where there's a clear advan- advantage, is there a clear advantage for, uh, Franklin, being a mayor over?
There's a definition further on in the statute somewhere, where if there's more money involved, that is considered a gain or an advantage, and that recruits the voting. And the mayor gets more money than the other county.
Right. This is the reason, too, that I asked you to have Tammy up here a long time ago. Remember, I told you she needed to come to one of our meetings? But, oh, see, I knew all of this was going to come up, and that's why I wanted her here. But guess what she did? She called me, talking about, and I don't know, she needs to come to these meetings. But, oh, see, I knew this was coming up, and people ask questions, you know, like.
I understand. I understand.
So in the future, we can, well, I have a girl to come, have her come, so I can look like.
Actually, how long has, it sounds like we've been operating against the law for quite some time now.
Yeah, yeah.
Ever since I've been here almost, against the law.
Yeah.
So how do we get to that?
Um, this because could not vote, uh, or potentially could not elect a mayor, and it is tied, can we elect a vice mayor?
Yeah, I think that's the only way to do that.
The only way is to kind of make it right.
I think you can, but it doesn't change the fact that the mayor remains the same, because the mayor hasn't been replaced, because the successor as mayor has not been chosen and qualified.
Yes, but before that.
But you could have a vice mayor, and.
But before that, the mayor would elect the vice mayor, right?
No.
No.
No, they actually changed it.
Okay.
Right.
You have a group, yeah, they changed it, because now the council, the council actually votes on it now.
She's right. She's right. Your point is more heavy, you can't do that now.
So do we have any nominations for vice mayor?
I may give a personal two of the vice mayor.
Okay. Any other nominations?
It's the same thing. The vice mayor may make more money than the relative, the council will do.
But he already elected him as mayor.
I mean, he really elected him as mayor. He was the mayor. What he's saying is that it goes back to him to be the mayor, so.
So that's a success.
You gotta have a few, the signed checks, and he's already on the thing to sign checks.
Franklin, I, I was not aware that the vice mayor gets more money, too, but if that's the case, then again, Sherri can't get votes for you, because it's the same proposition, but the others can.
Does the life, does the life?
For a vice person.
Yeah, they make more money.
Makes more money.
I mean, you guys can still, because the vote may be different, the vote may very well be different for a vice mayor.
You still got three people to vote.
Yeah, but that's.
I just.
And then possible.
Right, right, that's what I did.
It's included, but the rest of you can vote on the vice mayor proposition.
Well, she can vote if it's not, if they don't elect Franklin, right?
Correct.
Right.
For Frank.
If he's being appointed. Nominate Franklin.
Okay, any other nominations for vice mayor?
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on the top.
Same thing, he can vote the same time.
Go ahead, go ahead and vote for both, just that we have a record of that.
See, I think one thing we're overlooking is that Sue is the, uh, city manager, and she has the right to act as mayor until we get, get on the air.
No, I can't, because I can't sign checks by myself.
She can't sign checks.
We've got two signatures on checks, mine and the mayor's.
Yeah.
I appreciate you wanting to give me all that power, but no. I can't find one.
It's a difference between.
Just lose your ass.
He has no theoretical political function.
Okay.
Well, let's do a roll call.
Come on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
After the roll call.
After the roll call? You sure?
I know we're taking on.
No, it's okay, it's okay, this is important. We have a lot of people in the audience, this is very important. So, all right, uh, councillor Jorge, who are you voting for, yourself or for Franklin?
Me.
Okay. Councillor Franklin Schuler.
Say it.
Councillor Mayor Barton.
Hey.
Or.
Stop. You do.
Councillor Phillips.
Um, yeah, I like what I have here.
And then councillor Sherri Schuler.
We're saying.
First of all, you have to, you have to finish this vote, and you can nominate yourself, I guess.
You come for you. Could, could you vote for Virginia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that.
I'll have to nominate.
Wait, wait, so you abstaining from the last vote, what you do?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have to say.
Ability wise, it's going to be the vote the same. Talking about math enough, it's going to end up the same.
Well, that's very.
Now, that was five, uh, five counties, is there any possibilities of anybody right now to bring up a motion to pass the ordinance for, to be able to elect for mayor, and have the city council have the gracious to go ahead and accept it, so that we don't have to do a referendum and then set up a special election?
There is no such ordinance, there's an entire panoply of changes proposed to the charter that is not on the agenda, is not in front of the council, and they have to vote on an ordinance out of here, much as the idea is a good idea, it's not something that they could possibly legally do tonight.
Stacy?
I, I don't mean to, you know, bring out the, the most practical solution, but it makes sense to me that now that we have uncovered that Mayor Barton, for whatever circumstances unknown, should not have been elected back then, where it'd be unreasonable for the community to suggest that perhaps Mayor Barton himself should not be voting?
Voting for who?
For himself.
Uh, you could suggest it, but I don't think you could compel it.
I don't think it's unreasonable to, to suggest that perhaps Mayor Barton, knowing that now that the entire community understands that for a duration of time, you've served as mayor, when perhaps you should not have opted and served as mayor, I think it makes sense.
Well, let's take a vote.
In defense of myself, I'd like to say this about that, uh, this is the first I've heard this myself. It, it was brought to me attention by somebody sitting in this room, and there's nobody in this council, and I, I forwarded to Mr. Warren, which I obliged to do, uh, and he responded to that. So, uh, with that being said, I don't know what the vote was that night, uh, and we would have to go back and look, I'm almost positive it was not three two, if I remember right.
I nominated Jason for vice mayor. Right. And then we all, and everybody voted yes.
No, that is.
No, that was last year. He's talking about when, when it first started.
A year.
It was, no, it was like a couple, three. Bruce was mayor, our vice mayor. Bruce got sick, so he quit, and that put me in the place of being mayor. But the three councils apparently didn't want me for mayor, for whatever reason it was found, uh, they decided they would draw up a new ordinance, so they changed the ordinance that night, whereas the council would pick a new mayor, and they kicked me out of the spot of being vice mayor, and they chose a new vice mayor that same night. So they changed the ordinance overnight, and that's how that ended up, and that's how.
Oh, okay.
But for last, for last year's.
We're pulling up the minutes right now, they're on the town of Bronco, that's like, money's going to pull them off. It would have been the last September meeting of twenty twenty-two, right? Because we did this.
Did this in September.
September of last year, right? So she's pulling up the minutes right now, do you have them? It might be at the end of the meeting.
Curtis has got something right there.
Curtis, I'm sorry.
There's nothing that we can do tonight that's going to change the mayor or vice mayor. He said that we can carry on the meetings, so why don't we finish this meeting, and then we don't have any other meetings until this is settled? Because you're going to keep having the same, the same issue. So you, you don't vote in two different ways, and we come up with the same problem. So people give us the warm time, if there's anything to look into, it'll give him a chance, because he's the town attorney, to look into it, if there's anything the town manager needs to look into, but right now, we're just going to keep going in circles of what's going to happen, we're going to start creating a lot of animosity right here in this room, and it's going to bleed into the community. Because right now, there's different things, as being said, different things that need to be looked at, or whatever the case may be, you can't stop people doing, or going in whatever direction they want to go, but we can handle for this meeting tonight, and get this meeting done tonight without, you know, changing the mayor, or whatever the case may be, because he's saying that we can carry on, that it don't change, because often, we don't have a successor, and we can't get a successor with the balance that we have for mayor or vice mayor. So all the things that we're doing, it's just going to create more hostility in this room for tonight. So if we want to keep the hostility down in the room tonight, we go ahead and, and let it stay the same, vote on the stuff that we, we voted on, that's on the agenda, you know, finish this agenda, so it's not a waste of time, but then, all these different concerns can be addressed within the next two weeks.
So we still, uh, we have a tie for vice mayor, too?
Tie for vice mayor, but I think somebody just nominated somebody else, I hear another.
I don't think you will, because everybody can vote on this one, you won't have anybody abstaining, if Sherri makes her original motion to nominate Virginia, everybody can vote, so you'll have a actual winner or loser vote.
Right, you will.
Do you, are you on the?
I'll locate it up.
So we've got a nomination for councillor Phillips for vice mayor?
Yes.
Any other nominations for vice mayor? Okay, roll call, councillor Jorge. Yes or no? No? Councillor Franklin Schuler.
Yes.
Councillor Mayor Barton.
We're seeing.
This is for Virginia Phillips for vice mayor.
So if I'm voting for.
For councillor Phillips for, okay. Councillor Virginia Phillips.
Yes.
Councillor Sherri Schuler.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got councillor Virginia Phillips for vice mayor then.
Ms. Sue, can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I heard y'all concerned about Tammy and changing the election. She came before the council, we all agreed to change the election, and it wasn't just for her good, it was actually for the town's good, because when our election was, it was during the time when we was into trim, noticing, using the budget, and then we had, uh, the election, all of that all rolled into one, so it actually worked out for the better for both sides. And Tammy does the lot of work, she come in to make sure that everything is set up, that she's all her equipment, and have some of her workers there, so that was the reason that we actually voted to change the election.
Yeah, that, that had been that one down, that had been since Bronco was here.
I know, and she had been trying to get us to do it for the last, all the, for the la, at least the last five years, and they just kept putting it off and putting it off, and then, you know, she just came and found it, and I think Bronco was the first one that said yes, and then everybody else started saying yes.
Okay, so I have the minutes. Jason Hunt nominated Barton for mayor, Edmondson said it, it was passed unanimously. Tyler nominated Jason for vice mayor, and Ms. Sue seconded, passed unanimously.
That was last year.
September of twenty twenty-two, correct.
That's what you wanted, right?
Yeah.
That was last year, right?
Correct.
But in twenty-one, what Virginia was referring to, that Jason nominated Robert, and Robert got the nomination, and he turned around and made Jason the vice mayor, now that should be nepotism. Well.
Yeah, wait, wait, I'm sorry. I was there at that meeting, and I remember all of them turning around to each other saying, "Okay, who wants to be mayor?" No? No? Okay, who wants to be, who wants to be Vice Mayor? No? No? So that's how they did it, and they had the exact same, the exact same result. So it's now, it's not nepotism. It just happened this way. I'm seeing, okay, I don't live in the city, but my address said Bronson. Everybody thought, "Oh, well, this happened in the past." "Oh, yeah, well, a lot of things happened in the past. Not everything was good." "How about we look to the future?" "That is why I'm sure the Bronson people elected all of you to begin with is to go ahead on the future." "Let's not, let's use the past, what happened in the past, as a good lesson, and let's not redo it." "Let's go forward, and from there, we go on." "Right now, I certainly agree." I mean, your speech was amazing. "We're all going around and around. Everybody's broken. Everybody is, well, that shouldn't have happened. They kicked me out. They did this. They did that." Come on. This is not for personal. You're not here for yourself. You're here to serve the community. You're here to serve everybody, Bronson. This is for the future of Bronson.
I would suggest that people that nominate Schuler, who don't nominate Schuler, just vote Mr. Parton back in as mayor to make it official. Rather than keeping it the way that, I'm still gonna have to do some research. But I think there is a technicality that he may not be mayor. The town charter may have been approved that way, but it could be in violation. It may not, but I say that to make sure that everything goes smoothly. All the checks are paid the way they have to be paid, and nobody has any argument. Let's do that, and then go to the agenda soon to go ahead and approve the new town charter. And then we can go ahead and move forward and start having the elections for mayor. But at least for now.
Okay, so you have to have, if you did it that way, you'd have to elect the mayor every year, right?
Correct. I'll read you from ordinance 21-05. That's the one that we adopted December 20th of 2021. Again, it's Tammy's urging. So it says, "Members of the town council elected at each election, held as prescribed herein, shall take office on the first Monday of May following the election. At the first meeting held in May of every year, the council shall elect by majority vote a member to serve as mayor and another as vice mayor to serve for the year and until a successor shall have been appointed and assumed office." So this is every year, and again, we have to have a majority vote. If there's no majority vote, it's by successor, because there's no one else. That is, that is literally what, that is what stands right now. That is the most recent ordinance that we have for mayor and vice mayor. Stacy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have one last question, and I promise I'll go down. The only reason Sherry cannot vote is because Franklin stands to gain something. What if he, what if he declined and he raised for becoming mayor? Would Sherry then be able to vote? Oh, but then it falls under a definition of a point. Just one last angle before y'all move on.
Attorney Warren, do you have a?
I don't think it would matter. The position carries with it that particular emolument, to use that word. And waiving it or not, the mere fact that you have to waive it signifies that it's there. And I don't believe it validates the law. And I don't think, to be honest, that Sherry should risk against the commission of a misdemeanor by, you know, on the hopes that it'll be resolved. So.
I have a question. I don't know if that's legitimate, but can the council operate the mayor now until this issue takes place? Because if you have a problem deciding with the mayor, how about the council stuff becomes the mayor?
Ah, no, no, no. The answer is very simple. You have a legally constituted council. The mayor is the mayor until, she just read it, the successor is whatever, appointed and qualified and seated, whatever the language is. And that's the way it's always been. I didn't invent that, and that ordinance did invent that. I didn't remember that the ordinance said that, but I've seen it so many times through the years, because that's the way it works, that I knew it was there. So, you know, you're, you're pretty much trying to put a square peg in a round hole right now. And I realize that you're being resourceful. You're thinking about it. You're concerned, which is wonderful, really. It's democracy in action, to be honest, but these solutions just aren't gonna work.
So what do you think is the best way to do it? One hour already passed, you know?
The best way to do it is what several folks have already said, and that is, quite honestly, if you want my opinion, proceed with the meeting tonight, and let me see over the next couple of weeks. This is an unusual situation. If I can come up with something, that will satisfy everyone.
He can ask me if they're okay with it, and everybody will agree.
They probably will.
To get things going.
Good portion should stay open to you?
Look, you just basically give me the job of reporting back to the council what possibilities there are, given these unusual circumstances.
Who is Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor is. So does Parton stay mayor until this becomes resolved?
Yes.
Unless, do we have any other nominations for mayor? I'll open it up one more time. I'm gonna open it one more time. Any other nominations for mayor? I'm just asking if anybody else on the table, aside from yourself and aside from Councilor Franklin Schuler, is there anybody else who would like to throw their hat in the ring? Okay, I, I just, just wanna make sure I've covered all the bases. Okay, so we've got Mayor Parton and Vice Mayor Phillips going forward. The last thing we need to do is decide on committees.
Decide on what?
Committees. Council committees.
Well, do you wanna hold off until we know who mayor is? Table that as well?
I don't see any need for that. You know, we've changed committees. You should probably turn the meeting over to the mayor.
Okay, I will do that. I will turn that over to the mayor then.
Okay, well, if that be on, that on the table, do we need to, what's the council feeling about that? Would you like to go forward to those?
I'd like to take over the fire department committee. Well, I think technically I have.
Oh, yeah. Dollars, fire department, person there. Congratulations. Okay, Sherry, will you have you, the cemetery and the parks? How about if we, since you'd like to do the events? So put the parks in the event. How about that?
That's not too secure.
And then, Mr. Virginia? Roads and trees. That'll work. Do that. You have them? Cemetery and the cemetery and the library.
Yeah, it'll work.
Everybody any agreement? Yeah. All right. All right. Moving on to the next thing on the agenda. Sue, we have the first meeting of ordinance 23-02.
Yes, all right, I'll go ahead and read this for, for the record. The Town of Bronson Ordinance Number 23-02. An ordinance of the Town of Bronson to effect a voluntary annexation of property and change the boundaries of the Town of Bronson accordingly. So just to get everybody up to speed, we've been working on this for probably eight months or so. I don't think he's here tonight, right? Okay, so this is Beau Bernard and his wife Candace Cox. They live, let me get my notes out. So at the September 6th council meeting, the Coxes came before us because their property is adjacent to state property, which in turn is adjacent to our property, town property. So they would, by statute, they can voluntarily annex their property in. This proposed ordinance and the notice of proposed annexation would be published for two consecutive weeks in the Levy County Citizen. County Coordinator Wilbur Dean received the certified letter regarding the annexation on April 20th. He has not, we gave him 10 days to respond, to say if, for some reason, the county wanted to, you know, keep this land in their purview. I did not hear anything to the contrary from him. This is simply a first reading. Again, it's gonna be noticed, and then it would come before the council for a second reading.
All right, any discussion on this?
I wanna, if y'all vote, and if it's two and two. Who will write that?
The mayor. They only vote in case of that.
You will.
The mayor only votes in case of that. Actually, he's voted every one of them.
Yeah, I'm actually supposed to vote in every one of them, but if we have a majority, like most of our voting is, is, that's the only time. I just don't speak up. But I do. All right, and there's no discussion on this. Does anything?
Somebody moved to adopt it on first reading. I thought that means it's public, that you have a public hearing on it.
Make a motion to accept the first reading ordinance 23-02.
This property group is signed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Okay, next is the big one in your council package. So this is the Town of Bronson Comprehensive Plan Evaluation and Ear Notification Letter. Okay, so this was taking us back a ways. This is something that came before me, probably in the first six months I was here. So our comprehensive plan that we have in the Town of Bronson right now was passed in 1990. It was passed because at the time, the state required all municipalities to have a comprehensive plan. They gave all municipalities money to pass a plan. That's the plan we have in place right now. You're supposed to have updates to your comprehensive plan every seven years. Ours were required, I believe they were required actually in 2018. I think the last one we did was in 2011. So rather than spend $30,000 or $40,000 on a brand new comprehensive plan, the town signed an agreement with North Central Florida Regional Planting, Planning Council in August of 2022 to do the evaluation notification letter, evaluation amendments, and property rights element that will satisfy the state requirements. So just to kind of sum up, and there's 100-plus pages in here, but in summary, in 1999, the state comprehensive plan was amended to include policies related to urban and downtown revitalization. Not really relevant here in Bronson, but be that as it may. Chapter 2002-387 repealed the education goals and policies of the state comprehensive plan. They did say that the town comprehensive plan is consistent with the state comprehensive plan. The evaluation-based amendments may include some refinements to the goals, objectives, and policies that further its consistency with added state comprehensive plan policies. So in summary, these amendments are necessary to reflect changes in the state requirements. And the town will complete and transmate evaluation amendments by May 1st of 2024. So that will put us in compliance at that point. So we're basically just, you know, the council's voting to, you know, accept these changes. Again, this is mostly brought about by state requirements.
All right, go to the council.
I make a motion that we accept the comprehensive, the plan that changes to the comprehensive plan.
And to refer to me to comply.
Yes, or I just wanted to check it over to make sure we're compliant with the council.
Second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those say, they're secure.
Okay, next one might be a long conversation, so I apologize. We've got a couple one ones on here. Okay, so as everybody knows, or they should by now, we have a new subdivision going in in Bronson called Aloma Estates. Originally, when this came up in the summer of 2021, it was called Hell Meadow Place. It's on Main Street. So the reason I'm bringing this before the council is, as everybody knows, we're in the process of trying to pass water and sewer impact fees. We did a first reading. We're gonna have to go back and do another first reading. But the goal, of course, is at some point to either pass the replacement cost, which is a little in excess of $12,000, or to pass the remaining useful life, which is a little in excess of $6,000. We're in a little push and pull with the developer for Aloma Estates, JB Pro, right now, because when the building official and I met with them back in July of 2021, we told them that the council wanted all new housing that came into the town to be on sewer. We agreed. There was nothing in writing. Recently, when we met with them, they basically came back and said, "Sure, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna lay the lines inside of the subdivision, but we're not gonna install a lift station, and we're not gonna connect it to the sewer main, which is approximately a mile away." The reason I'm bringing this before the council is because I'm trying to get a way to make this work for everybody. The way I see it right now is if they go ahead and they lay that, the sewer lines, that is our engineers calling it, July sewer lines, they're also gonna go ahead and put in septic tanks. So now we've got septic tanks in there, which costs $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. And we've got sewer lines that we're not using and may not use for 10, 20 years, depending on when we can get that, you know, the money to now connect. So I'm just trying to get an appetite from the council as to whether or not you guys would be interested in saying to the developer, "Listen, if you guys do everything for the sewer, lay the lines, put the lift station in, connect it to the sewer main, would you guys be interested in then waiving their impact fees?"
Yes.
It's just a thought, because I'm trying to not have septic tanks go in there. I just feel like that is backwards from what we're trying to do here. And it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to, you know, to do both, to have septic tanks in there and a dry sewer line.
Well, when that originally was done, it was having two of them that was gonna have septic. All the rest were supposed to be on our sewer.
Well, correct. But then they came back and said, "Yeah, we're gonna lay the line. That's it." So it's gonna be a dry sewer line within that subdivision, but there's gonna be septic tanks.
Curtis. I'd like to hear what the opinion would be.
Sure, absolutely. Does it make sense what I, what I'm saying leads to? You understand? Okay. Curtis, what are your thoughts?
Well, you'll have to follow the other developers along in something. I think it's a good way if they are willing to put in the lift stations and do run the lines. You know, the lift station's gonna be there until the town is gonna pay the money to run the sewer line from Fairground to the sewer plant, which I know for Fairground, when I talked to them about putting, you know, the lift station there, it's about $1, $1, $2 million to put a lift station on Fairground. So that's why they didn't do when they ran the original sewer line, they called it the pumping station. So going that way with it, you know you're gonna be in excess of $1.45 million on sewer line there. If you go across 24, which you pick up Main Street, you're gonna need a couple of lift stations there also. You get, you have to go under 24. You have to go up kind of row 32 and get to the line that connects on 32 that goes to the sewer plant. So there's a fee that's gonna be, you know, a cost associated with that. So now, if we allow them to go ahead and we waive the impact fees, and we're gonna get revenue on water, it's only two houses in there now. So two houses.
They're gonna be modeled or raided out?
Rerated out. Rerated out. So we knew, you know, really whether they'd be moving forward, putting more homes in there. I mean, they, we did agree to, you know, give up the impact fees. But then, what period of time will we get, we even getting any money from it, depending on when they build? It could be. You know, that's the question, though. How long is it gonna be before they actually complete the development? Or it's to receive any money just from the water revenue? Because right now, it's only two homes there. So.
It's something that, that really bugs me is that, I've been here in Bronson, I had a house here in Bronson for 30-some years, almost 40 years, and I don't have sewer yet. And then somebody's gonna come here, build a house, and they got sewer on the. And then somebody is going to come here, build a house, and they got sewer on the same street, huh? That's, that's not fair, man. I mean, I know, I know beginning of, we won't have a, uh, impact fees now, I mean, because I thought everybody that built in Levy County had to pay a impact fee anyway.
They do, they do.
And the county, not if you're not.
No, you do, we do in the county, so you do have to pay it, but we give it to the county. We don't get those impact fees constantly. This would be impact fees that we would get for water and sewer from town.
So if they even ca, so if they connected to the sewer line on Main, it wouldn't be flowing to the.
I mean, there's no sewer, there's no sewer. The sewer on, for the Main Street, it stops at Fairground.
Yeah, that's.
Going with, when these.
You go crawl on.
There's no, there, uh, from Fairground going up to Main, there's no sewer. And there's only two options.
None of those. If they. None of the houses on Main.
Main Street, High Street, Love Street, none of those streets have.
But the thing with, how long would it, you know, are they planning before they build the new homes?
It's a whole lot of first.
Um, you know, for the city, you know, can revenue to get off the water, or how much we would be getting in waiving the impact fees?
How much, how much, so how much is it for the lift station from the supplies, the two more homes to buy? And, and not, not mediocre supplies, I mean, like, non-ruckable, um, supplies?
To do the entire thing?
Probably two million dollars.
Leap, right?
I would make them like, please go to Facebook.
Right. That's the problem, is even with the impact fees, we're not going to be able to get there.
We can't not have any impact fees. Like, we just can't afford to put a down market in there.
The town, and this is the thing with sewer, you only, you get grants for the only for the low and medium income houses, which those are the people that really can't afford it. So you, you know, if we get sewer and we give it in the neighborhoods where people have a fixed income, that's an issue within itself. So you got a new development, we don't want to, you know, really put in septic tanks because we want to get the revenue, but they build the homes where there's no sewer. So how do you, how are you going to get any, you know, money from where you don't have?
You're going to put the, make them put something in that can, you know.
Basically, because we don't have a line, you know, they can put all these in there unless they're going to pay to run a main, a sewer main from where they're building to the sewer plant. And with that, they just, it's only going to be their homes. But about the rest of Main Street from Fairground, you know, they decide that they're going to do it, they're going to run a line from where they're developing, and they're going to go east, go under 24 to the sewer plant, it's still going to leave a fair amount of, you know, but we have that income from sewer while they do the paperwork.
Whatever they buy, what is it not using when they go back to attach sewer, whenever they do decide to do it? That's a lot of issues.
There's a lot of issues.
Well, then, because then if you put in the sewer, they're going to, they're probably going to come off the septic tanks.
Right.
There's the question of the septic tanks.
Right, who's going to pay to do that? I mean.
Oh, is there no ordinance to come off of the septic tank once you're, once you have?
If sewer is available, isn't it? If sewer is available, you have to connect?
See, I think what happened was.
Yeah, run by, you have to connect.
That's what I thought.
Within a year, yeah. Within a year, three years, something like that.
Hey, I ain't about that, I don't know.
I know a lot of areas, like Fairground, sewer is there, sewer line is there, but they didn't put stub outs.
Oh.
So there's no stub outs there. Four of them, or two connectors sewer. So you've got to go back and put stub outs, a lift station, and all those things.
It's a, that's why I wanted to kind of get the appetite of the council, because trust me, I'm trying to figure out a way to not have these houses get sewer and septic, you know, it, it just seems so counterintuitive to me. You're just spending that much more money, and then, like I said, you, there's so many unanswered questions. Who's then going to be responsible for crushing these lines? You know, are we going to be able to, I mean, Curtis and I talk about this all the time. Are we going to be able to get a grant to then retrofit sewer in there? And why would the state want to do that? If we say, oh, this is a brand-new subdivision that was built in 2024, and now we'd like to, you know, lay sewer here, why would the state want to do that? I can understand if they're 1950s or 1960s houses, of course, but they're going to say, well, why didn't you guys put sewer in there to begin with? You know, I just don't know if we're going to be able to get a grant to do that.
That question was brought up when they, when they came in here about that. When the council said, and this was kind of confusing, council said, we would allow you to build two homes to start.
Right.
Only on septic.
Correct.
From that on, and that, and that should be in the minutes and all that, from then on, everything there being built, the other 49 homes were supposed to be on sewer system. And to me, if they're going to add all them homes, they should be the ones, if you're going to waive the fee, they should be the ones that run the line all the way up, and then we can work on the lines to get the rest of them on. But if that's two million dollars that the city wouldn't have to pay, they should.
I think we should probably give them a discount, but it doesn't sound like we can afford to just waive the fee.
The city can't afford to run that much maintenance without, without grants and, and all the other stuff going along, unless they go, and they fight for appropriations money, they could try to do that, but there's no guarantee that that's going to happen.
When you look at the homes development, you're going to need more than just a lift station, you're going to need grinder pumps. Because the number of homes in there, you know, grinder pumps serve as your septic. So every so many homes, you're going to have to have a grinder station. And it's going to have to be forced made, it's not going to be ready to be added to it. So you, you're talking, if they're going to build 49 of homes, then probably every two homes, you're going to have to have a grinder station. It's connected to that one lift station, that will get a pump toward the main, and will pump it out of the subdivision. So you look at, I think, if they want to build, then they pay for it.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think the city can afford to, you know, to pay, they have sewer for them, I don't think we can pay for the upkeep. I think our hands are full with what we have now.
I agree.
Because I don't think, you know, with our sewer, with, you know, with our connections, our sewer, where we have grinder pumps, grinder stations, you know, it was only guaranteed for the year. So we, we passed that now, so now we're spending money replacing grinder pumps. Two weeks ago, we had to replace five grinder pumps, you know, at almost $2,000 a pump.
And you're just saying that you're going to have to do maintenance on the fittings because they're.
Yeah, I mean, so we really need to, you know, I don't think the town can afford the upkeep, I don't think the town can afford to put in those. The only way we were able to get sewer in the areas that we have was through grants.
And you're not going to get grants for the new development? I can tell you that. With those homes being over $100,000, you're not, they're not going to be your income requirement.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's not really a burden for the city, I mean, we want growth, we want to get people on sewer, but if we don't take the money to put in the sewer, then that's money that we need to use to do some other things for our city, we got that kind of way.
The thing about, the thing about here in Bronson, that's the only, uh, income that the town has, is due sewer, water, and garbage.
And the catch too, too, that we don't have enough people on sewer to pay for it. Sewer is not paying for itself. And the people that's on sewer are having to pay for the people that's not on sewer, you know, when you look at the number of homes and the people that's on sewer. That's why the rates are going up, you know, compared to the water usage, you know, people are paying, you know, when I first started, you know, for some of these people, the people that have fixed incomes, they were paying for water and garbage, you know, the, the basic bills were like $19, $20. But now, that don't even cover sewer.
Is there any kind of, uh, thing in place where that everybody has to have water in, in Town of Bronson?
So like, if they live.
Another mandatory, that says you got to have water, right?
They pay minimum fees regardless if they have a well or.
Get a lot right by, be supposed to.
But, but I think that they can have a well also.
But just to, but they're still going to pay that minimum fee for water regardless?
Uh-huh.
They're still going to pay the minimum fee. We're still going to have a water bill, but water doesn't cover it, the, the sewer is the issue.
But the main issue is trying to get what we do with this estate, Aloma State, what we going to do with them?
Yeah. It sounds like if they, if they are building, they're just going to have to pay for it.
The problem is I can't mandate that. That's the problem.
You know, I, I don't think we could move forward past the two homes that we already have given agreed that they can have septic tanks.
Right.
You know, maybe they can come up with something that, you know, with the other 49 homes that they go to build, they, they need to look and see what the resources that they have. We don't have the resources to put in sewer. We don't have the resources to run a main sewer line.
Originally, that was, originally, they was going to put the two homes in septic. They was going to pay for the sewage themselves.
Right.
That was their plan originally, that's why we agreed to allow.
And they're still, they're still.
They will, they're not going to connect it to sewer.
But we don't have nothing to connect.
So they'll put this up there, but.
And I think what, what happened is the language in it, I mean, they knew that sewer didn't run, we had no sewer lines running on Main Street. And with them saying that they're going to connect, now, you know, you got to pick, okay, you're going to connect, and now they're saying what we're going to connect to, we'll put the lines with what we're going to connect to. See, and I think that's just the language in where they look at others and say, okay, we got them. So we need to take a stance, if we're going to, if we want them to put in sewer and run it to the lift, to the lift station, then we can say, hey, if you guys want to build the other 49 homes, this is what you're going to have to do. And, and that's it.
Yeah, I think, and, and I understand what you're saying, and, and I agree with what you're saying, uh, it's going to kill the project. I mean, if you look at the numbers, if you're looking at, if you're building a house on there, and those homes, what was these two?
250.
So there's supposed to be 50 homes?
Fifty-two, fifty-one.
So do the math.
Or we go ahead and say, build the homes and put them on septic.
They have to bet.
I mean, and get the impact fees, I mean, but it's not going to be where.
Even that, the impact fees from this, at the highest valuation we're talking about, still we're not paying for this.
We're not going to, we're not going to pay that for sewer, but the revenue that would come from the impact fees, if we made the impact fees, I don't know, what is the impact fees now?
Maybe the 12, 530 times 51, so.
It's not like the best thing we're here to do is just tell them to, if they want to continue, put the sewer lines in with the anticipation that downwind somewhere we will be able to, give them the okay to do the septic.
Well, that's what they're saying right now, right?
These people are not going to build a house here and set it for $250,000 and it's costing $350,000 to build, that's just not going to happen.
But they still got, they ain't got, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if they're not connected to the sewer plant, that's going to end that.
For sure. It was just a, it was just a conversation piece, again, mostly because.
Open, important conversation.
But this is the thing, we need to decide, you know, if we're going to let them put them all on sewer, that's not going to change, because there's not even sewer lines that's running on Main, on Main Street going to the sewer plant. And it's not going to be in there any time soon.
The question I've got here is, what is the size of the lot?
They're half.
With the density, four septic tanks, if they're all on septic.
Minus a few of them, I believe there's a few that are less than a half an acre.
Yeah, they said they were going to be half acre, and then they had to come for.
A variance.
Variance for LDR change or whatever, to go to smaller lots or a couple of them.
I mean, there's still a couple, we're, we're still a ways away from being at that point. Number one, this has to be rezoned from agriculture to residential, I believe. So that still has to happen. So we're, you know, we're not, I'm just, again, the point of this was just, I want to make everybody aware that we're kind of doing double work here. We're going to end up putting in septic tanks in all of them and laying these dry sewer lines, so to me, it just seems counterintuitive.
But we need to, they need.
Right.
At least that, we know that we're not going to put sewer in anytime soon.
Well, it's, those things, do you have those affordable houses?
Right, but in fact, earlier, we, even if you put the, let's say, we, we, we got left for the grants that were paid for those houses to connect the sewer. The people living in those houses can't afford the extra bill because of the low income. So when you get grants, you can really only get it for a low-income store. So those people can't afford sewer, even if it was free to hook up to it, because it's going to make, it's going to be another bill.
And basically, that's what it was, it was free. They hook up three, three cross the septic tanks, hook them up for free in the areas that.
Back on Virginia Street, right?
On Virginia, Margaret, you know. So, so basically, it's, you know.
Based on the figures you give us just right then, it'd be about $48,000 a house to hook up for sewer.
Yeah, I think this is something for them to deal with, it's not for us to scratch our heads. I mean, it's, it's something for them to decide, I mean, if we decide that they, we will, we allow them to put septic tanks and we get the impact fees, well, make sure we get enough in impact fees for that money. And if not, then it's just going to kill, you know, they may not build.
But they may not.
It's not only that, those with the impact fees, what you're not mentioning is that those are 52 homes that are going to be paying asset property taxes also, and fire assessment fee also.
Correct.
So the fire department makes money, you do have revenue coming in from the, what is it, six, seven million points that the, the city charges, so there will be some money coming in if we just allow it to just be on septic and pay an impact fee and get the asset assessments out of there. Because with the water bill, you can still charge the garbage fee, right? So they're going to be, yeah, they're going to be on city water.
Yes.
So you're going to have the water revenue, the garbage revenue, and the property tax revenue, and the fire assessment revenue.
And the impact fees.
And the impact fee.
So we can't represent Aloma State here.
I can.
I mean, it's not a lot, but it's, it's better than nothing.
Let's get a representative from Aloma State here to the next meeting, and we'll talk to them.
All right, so we go, you want to table this, or what you want to do?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll ask them to come and speak at the next meeting.
All right.
Thanks, Curtis.
All right, next.
Okay, so again, next, um, last item on my agenda for today is resident concerns regarding Bronson U Sports. I'm not going to go ahead and read the letters, but there's five different letters that I've received that are in your package, you can certainly read, regarding issues with Bronson U Sports. So let me, again, for the public, whoever's not aware, obviously, we no longer have sports under our Parks and Rec Department that was outsourced to Bronson U Sports in February of 2020. They're on a, I'm going to call it a five-year agreement or contract, where the town gives Bronson U Sports a certain amount of money, and it's tapered off over the five-year period. So it started with $10,000, went down to eight, six, four, two, and then would be nothing. The reason I'm bringing this before the council, again, because again, we have some new members of the council, but I, I keep getting concerns regarding Bronson U Sports. We do have somebody who has come forward and said that they would be willing to take over the program if you guys want somebody else to take over the program. It's not something we could do right away. By the agreement, we would need to give David and Angela Lamb 60 days' notice prior to it renewing in February of 2024. So again, this isn't something we could do right away. But again, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it is something that continues to come before me with some issues, so I just wanted to put it out there, and Angela is here today, so she can address, you know, some of these concerns. But again, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. Angela, do you want to come up and speak?
May I?
Absolutely.
Okay, just to enlighten everyone, I, I did speak with Angela and David yesterday, maybe yesterday?
Sorry?
A second, excuse me. And, uh, bring this to their attention to ask her to be here. Uh, like I said, if you address everybody.
I, Sue contacted us closer to the end of the year, a few months back, right after our finances had happened, and said she has an intent. My husband and I came in and spoke with her, we told her the same thing that I'll tell you guys. I'm not sure specifically what your list dates, but based on the things that he's told me, I've got the information, you know, the response to all of those things here. If you want, I will just read it off whatever. So first off, about the background checks, we are conducting background checks with a group in the sports engine league. In the past, we've always been able to print that off as a list format that says the person's name, the, when they passed it, and that it had passed. Sports Engine took a new platform this year, and it has been. Sports Engine took a new platform this year, and it has been a strength to try to get all that information. So I'm having a hard time getting it in list format. I have asked everybody to send me the email because you go on through, you submit all your information, and then it's up to Babe Ruth as to whether or not you're qualified to coach or be a volunteer in the sports program.
Wait, wait. So they go through Babe Ruth for all of the sports?
For all of the sports, everything. Because then we are out of them. It has nothing to do with us. You either submit and Babe Ruth approves you, or you submit and create a red flag shoot, and then we're not allowed to accept your vote at that point. That way, we don't know if somebody, what we did happen on their flag, we don't know what that was for. All we know is they can't be on our field. Or, there's just a lot, and it keeps us out of the involvement. Either you pass with Babe Ruth, or you didn't. I had told Sue that I would send her the list, but because I can't get it in list format, I'm having everybody sending me their approval email because they had to create the account, go on and submit their information to Babe Ruth, and receive the email saying they were approved. I'm asking them to forward it to me, and I will send it to her so that that information can be on the, or on file with the town. Because we do indeed conduct those background checks, and we expect everybody to. We also, we had asked a few years ago if the town council would pay for the background check, so we should make sure they're being done. They are $25 apiece. And that friend, they said, no, we are currently making, anybody who wants to volunteer or coaches required to code that $25 apiece themselves. It's valid for two years, and then you have to go back and read. Otherwise, you're off. So that is the background check. Anybody have any questions? Next thing that was expressed to me was, I'm not sure where the concern came from, but people feel that we did not hold our signup dates at the correct time. Newberry's signups were from January 1st through February 12th. Little Tim held theirs from January 10th to January 21st. We began advertising our registration date on January 7th. Our first official signup date where we accepted registrations was January 31st. Our last date was February 15th. That is only three days after Newberry's last registration date. I'm not really sure where anybody feels like we were behind on our times or anything like that. We advertised with flyers, A and M Line, we passed out flyers, and we just got the PEP right at school to try to make sure that everybody knew what we were offering and that we intended to have those teams, and that we are trying to field all the teams possible. The dates were tipped because first, Babe Ruth is asking everyone to not start quite so early. The district tournaments happen in June and July of the year. So if you start baseball in January, by June, July, people are out. They don't wanna play anymore. So it's hard to get teams to the district. So they said, can you guys pull off a little bit? Let's do it, start from, say, end of February, beginning of March, somewhere in that time frame, to actually start games. So we went with that. Also, our basketball season, the games began on January 7th. It is extremely hard to ask people to register for the next sport when we still have a sport that is just starting. Our game's never gonna end until March 4th. That, we literally ended March 4th, and we started baseball, it's not going to fall any easier. Our registrations were not the same as Newberry or Williston. However, our, we had start dates or end dates that were the same as Chiefland, Eelcrest, which is Trenton Bell, Dickie, Waldo, Bradford, Stark, and even Gainesville. We can't compare ourselves to Newberry because Newberry has a huge base staff for their sport. They have, and they have a huge tax base. They have so much more that they can do. We can't compare with what they are doing. We also can't compare ourselves with Williston, even though they're right there and they're little, because they only offer baseball and softball and soccer. And they were intending to close down their softball program this last season. They only got one team. So in all honesty, we are trying to provide as many sports as possible to as many players. We have different demographics, names of the town, and different player bases. We offer everything we can and make every attempt possible to build a team. We are also, excuse me, attending all of the district-wide meetings. We're in contact with all of the other towns in the league. Our players haven't missed out on anything, and we still have games with those same towns that they were concerned about. So I'm not really sure where the signup date had anything to do with it. The next thing I believe it says there is something about losing players to other towns. And I'm sorry, the only thing I can say about that is people feel like the grass is always greener on the other side. Well, I'm sorry, the grass is green when you water it. And so they feel like they want to go somewhere where maybe they're ultimately going to be on a winning team. Or, for example, Williston's registration ended before ours, so they guaranteed had a team to be on versus maybe we're not gonna get a team. Well, we did get a team. We always push to get those teams. So I can't account for why people take their children anywhere else. I believe it says something there about a feeder program. We have always and continue to be, to want to provide an opportunity for the youth in our community to learn about and grow life-saving help of sports. We strive to teach them the fundamentals that will help them to try out for it and make this middle high school team, as well as the other competitive teams. We're trying to build a foundation that will help Bronson have more competitive and knowledge players. We all wanna see our players grow in rows. We want our players to be in Bronson. We are trying to build Bronson and beat Bronson stronger. As it relates to the high school, I really don't have any control over what these kids are playing for or attending middle high school there. Those decisions are made by the parents, players, guidance counselors, and such. They've done what they feel is the best interest of their children. It's more likely, based on the programs offered or course selections, not something that's happening at the youth level. We do currently work, we have the middle school baseball coach who is helping coach our 12U baseball team. Those players will be coming in the next season at the middle school level. So we're working to be on this main page with them going forward. We also have several of the middle school JV softball players that are on teams that we have that they're working to get more front and more rest, and become better, stronger players. That way, they're ready when they start. On top of that, we have encouraged and supported Mr. Tim Jones, who was the head football coach at the school, and his attempts to get a tackle football program. It didn't happen, but we did everything that was asked. We secured equipment, we got approval at the school so this team could practice there, and we did the plan in the same manner at the pet school. We bought footballs. The town has other equipment that we made available. Unfortunately, we didn't get enough players, so they ended up not doing that. We did flag, two feet, flag football, and we did field two flag football teams. So, and our idea, that is the base that we can keep going to try to get tackle football at the school. But currently, we are trying to offer everything that goes up into the school. There's a question there about the money. I submitted a profits and loss statement to Sue for 2021 and 2022. 2020 was the first year that we started, and that was COVID. I'm working on getting that information together because we did a lot of, people got refunds, people did trades, we did a camp, and there was just a lot of switching that happened. So the, that is shifting. We didn't make any money that year. We lost out a lot, and we just made it happen. We receive our funds through the registration fees, sponsorships, donations, fundraisers, concessions. It's not a huge money-making business. The money is used to buy uniforms, the end-of-season awards, charter fees, and cheaper facilities-related expenses, team fees, equipment, apparel fees, and building concessions. We provide the players with nice, high-quality uniforms. We do live in, I don't wanna call it a quarter, we live in somewhere before area. It's hard to get people to pay sometimes. They don't always have, they don't always have the funds. So we do spend a lot of money covering, or create sponsorships for the registration fees because we wanna make sure the teams get built, and we wanna make sure all the kids get to play regardless of whether, you know, their parents could pay to be or not. We want them out there playing for their. The finances balance out. The teams are filled, they get to play, everything is covered. There's not a lot left, but in all honesty, it's not about making money. It's about making sure that the kids have teams to play on and that Bronson is growing, that their youth are getting the same opportunities that other youth are getting. There's a complaint there, something about the coaches buying their own equipment. I'm sorry, that is unfounded. DYS has provided the equipment and is there for the coaches and players to have a successful season. We provide the same equipment in here that the other towns, and they provide for them. Oftentimes, we actually provide a little bit more than what they do. We provide goalie gloves, like for soccer, things like that. Other places don't do that. They, some of them don't even give practice balls. The players should be trained all the time. So we do provide everything that's needed. We've had people ask for items such as the player benches or team coolers, but that is not technically equipment. It's not required to play. We provide, those are preferential and wishless items that in other towns are also provided by parents, coaches, or fundraising. Equipment's expensive. We only give out the necessary amount and what is needed, and we expect everybody to get it back. The town council, as well as the county commissioners, purchased a lot of equipment for us. And we don't want to have to ask continuously for the same items to be purchased. So we're a little bit stinky, and we only get 12 balls to practice, not 14. So you get 12 balls, that's enough. Like I said, with the expectation that it be returned. There is a question there regarding a food truck, King Fisher. They came to us for our soccer hosting. Someone else came and asked if King Fisher could come to our soccer hosting. And like I expressed to them, the soccer hosting is done through Act Four. Each league in the Act Four league gets a hosting date. The ideal of that hosting date is that you are running concessions, and whatever comes in is profit for the league. It's the idea of not to have food trucks come out and be there on that date. Is that your concession is run by your league. So we declined to have the King Fisher food truck out. I was going to contact them regarding the baseball and softball games because those are in the evening. Sometimes it is hard to get concessions going. However, the Arnold family stepped up and said that they would run it. They've been there. So in all honesty, DYS makes a full profit, other than a bunch of necessary purchase items they sell. People are usually more apt to purchase from a concession stand, and the profits are all going directly back into the nonprofit youth league rather than a for-profit business. So it's, to us, it's more beneficial for the youth league to run its own concession rather than use food trucks to provide those things.
Could the food truck offer, just to your accident sake, I know when we did it before, they offered a percentage?
I think it was thirty that they offered, which isn't bad. And so we thought about it, like I said, a weeknight, and we had not a lot going on. But when it's a whole day like that, thirty percent is a nice compared to what we can make. I mean, from eight in the morning and all, if we were out there, it's seven. So it's, sometimes it is beneficial, and we consider it, but we had volunteers step up, so we decided that.
No, I was just trying to, I was just.
Yes, they did offer a percentage. It wasn't just for them. Also, it says something there about that we are not taking help. We continuously ask for coaches and volunteers. Our registration form asks if people are interested in coaching or volunteering. We utilize the ones that offer to help, and especially if they actually follow through by coming to help. We take the help of everybody who offers and pass the background check. Mr. Scott offered to come and work on the field. We made him accessible to help. If he could come up and work on, aside from the registration paper, we have the team meetings at the beginning of the season. We ask anybody that wants to help in any capacity, please step up and help. Sometimes we get people that say they will. Most of the time, we get crickets. When we get crickets, we figure out how to prompt it ourselves. It is a constant situation. Aside from the lacking of the volunteers, there's a lot of people that don't wanna do duty. I mean, there's a lot of duties. They're setting up concessions, pre-game preparations, field care, maintenance, and upgrades, closing down after games, accepting registration forms. And I asked for a couple of these things, and there are a handful of people that show up and consistently are there. There are other people that say they're going to do things, but they have never actually shown up. But we do not deny anybody. If you can pass the background check, you can come out and help. We will find something for you to do. Currently, we have coaches that are doing things out after themselves. They're leaving their equipment out after games, and so we're trying to deal with that. But it, all in all, we have a very empty signup sheet for this program. So during basketball season, I had three coach weekends that we asked for people's help, and I put out basically a sheet like this. If it was highlighted, I need everybody to fill in. We were gonna be out of town, guaranteed. We can't do this unless people step up. There are a lot of abuse blocks on this one, this one, and there's supposed to be one on here. And that one, where people didn't. And I, it's just the basic stuff, like setting up, running the clock at the scoreboard, and breaking down. So everybody that signed up, they came out, and we let them help. They were there to help. Everybody else, I don't know what to say about them not stepping up. I mean, some people actually show up, some people don't. Personally, I feel like, I don't know who it is that's saying that they could do this better, but it's frustrating to me because I feel like if they really wanna do it, why aren't they here helping? We fully want to be doing it. We're doing it for the community. It is not for us. It is for the community. And anybody and everybody that wants to be part and help make that growth is welcome to come and help make that growth. I don't know how else to proceed on that. People who have come and done things, they have worked their way up. They, we now have new ward members now, so that is helpful. But the people who have shown up, continuously been there, proven that they care about the children, the teams, making sure that it happens, not just their sport or their child team. Those people are the ones who have been given responsibility in more higher roles within the league. It says something there about mismanagement. I'm not really sure how to respond. I'm passionate about making sure that sports program continues to provide as many outlets for the kids as possible. I also have a little bit of anxiety, and I get a little overwhelmed. I'm sure you can tell by my speaking. I feel like if other people that are saying these things would step up and help, they might not see me looking so stressed out. We're gonna make sure it gets done, but all in all, we've been successful so far. We surpassed what was offered going with BCR. We're working to build something that's solid and sustained for the youth. We do not focus on one sport or activity. We're doing our best to provide as many opportunities we can. We've been successful thus far and continue to grow each season. We are currently fielding a four-team soccer team for the second season in a row. That has not happened in more than 10 years for Bronson. And Bronson used to be one of the biggest leagues within Act Four. We started, it's helped start that. So we're pretty proud. We have a four-team soccer team for the second season in a row. We're consistently fielding all of the age groups, or almost all of the age groups. We're offering every sport possible. We continue to work hard to have more teams within these sports. Our current season that we have right now in spring, we have a total of 143 players participating in our team. We have T-ball, 8U rugby, 10U minors, 12U majors baseball team. We have 10U, 12U, and a 14U softball. We have 6U and 8U and 11U and a 14U soccer team. That are all currently playing games and actively enjoying their season and doing good. Like I said, 143 players. The last season, we have a 12 cheerleading. We had one of each age group, 6, 8, 10, 12, and 14U. We also had two cheer squads that were ages 5 to 8 and 9 to 12. So I feel like that was good. The upcoming season, we're working with Mr. Jones to try to field some tackle football teams this season. That's starting in June or July. We also, someone from the school had contacted, not the school, but people related to the school had contacted wanting to know about the 18U softball, because there's a lot of girls that want to play, and it's about to be offseason. So we're working with some of those people to do 18U softball, soccer, softball, like football registrations. All are happening in August. Like I said, I've submitted a profits and loss statement to her. I'm not sure what else to say. I personally feel like, you know, we could do it on that. I also need to point out, while I'm here, that she said we had a five-year contract with the town of Bronson. We do have a five-year contract with the town of Bronson that was an oral contract that was regarding money and funds. Because when we originally founded this organization and started it, it's because BCR was immediately closing. It was January 1st, then we closed on January 1st, and then the spring season needed to start immediately. We said, we have no money. We can't do this without funds. That's where the funding thing came from. As Sue said, that is correct. However, we do have a separate contract with the town that she, like she said, it's dated February 3rd. It must be, and I could sign, that say our responsibilities and the town's responsibilities, and that, yes, it has to be done in a letter. But this contract is completely separate from the monetary contract. The monetary contract is something that is just set up to ensure DYS has funds to move forward because you started with nothing, it was really hard. And we did. And I don't know if anybody remembers, but we did not get the $10,000 the first year because we asked for it at the wrong time of year. So in all honesty, we have done this without that initial $10,000. That is all. Did I miss anything that was listed? So we're currently ordering them. It's called Queen USA Sports Bar. It is an online facility. But registrations, we end our registrations, and then we usually have about two weeks that people are still filling in. So we're usually ordering our.
So I'm, from a perspective of somebody who runs that kind of thing, you know I'm gonna be able to do that. So what you may want to look at doing is maybe order a couple of extras because what happens is it's time for the kids to play, and you don't have uniforms. Oh, let me be, I did your thing. So I'm suggesting it also that maybe you work with some of the companies that the school works with. And so I say group, because when I helped run it, we ordered from the same companies, and therefore, they would give us better rates, and we got the stuff on time because they're used, they were used to working with the school. And as a tool, I have to have my stuff out certain ways. So I know what you're saying, because all of this stuff that you get in complaint is the same stuff that they was complaining about when it was before. And I tried to explain that some of the stuff you can't do anything about, and some of the stuff you gonna have to take a hard knock on. So what I'm telling you is that you can't still take registration three weeks after when it's time. So you have to, I understand, I wanna be buddy kids too, but the longer you don't, the more it gets taken advantage of, and it's not fair to send them out looking any kind of way when those parents signed up on time.
Yes, ma'am, I completely understand. Yes, ma'am, I completely understand. And in all of the seasons that we've been doing this, we've only had two seasons that we ever did not have uniforms. It was last fall and that was only for the soccer teams. And it was this spring and that was only for T-ball, minors, and rookie teams. We received our uniforms shortly after. It was not because of an ordering issue. They were sent to arrive to us before the date that we had those games. They had an issue with their shipping. I also need to point out that while we didn't have our uniforms this season, Alachua Soccer League did not have their uniforms for two weeks of their season. We failed critically. We started with our uniforms. We played two games and then we received ours. They did their opening day in Trenton with no, with t-shirts, borrowed uniforms for the day. Because yes, we will, I will look at the people that you're requesting or that you're...
No, I mean, I can do, I can tell you, it was more hopeful when we used somebody that was vocal, like the girl we got the uniforms, we got them from a company in O'Callaghan. So, whenever I didn't have something, they just came from O'Callaghan and they bought it.
Even though the softball team started, even though the softball team this year went three to four weeks before they got the uniforms?
At the school?
Um, that they ordered from somebody else. I'd say, not the same, not the same people. They ordered their stuff from somebody else. That's...
That's the point. That's the thing.
So, right, so that's what I'm saying to you is that there's a, there's another way that you have to do the ordering because before it was BPR, before the town did, I'm...
Do you consider once or twice out of fifteen seasons to...
No, I'll tell you now, what I'm saying is that it may, it may be...
Yeah, and I definitely said I would accept that. I would see the information regarding the businesses that she is referring to.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
You can work again on the thing and see what you can come up with the best solution. That's the best way to do it.
A huge help for the people that are not volunteering. And I had talked to a couple of people at the pool about the same issue because in many sports, you got people that say they don't show up and they don't show up. However, you also have kids that cannot afford to play. So, what you do is you have them fill out what is called an indigent application. And in that indigent application, that child and that parent figure out why they cannot afford to pay and then they have to in turn work the concession stand. And that's how you, that's how you eliminate that whole problem. And you can try it out the first year. You know, you're, and our generation gets paid for free. And I tell you, it's not, it's not really their fault, but unless we make them work for what they are getting, they're getting it for free and it's on our backs.
So, our issue with that is some of the parents use drugs. Some of the parents are not safe to be around children. So, that's the reason why we can't do the children that are waiting to be...
We try to be parents.
Well, they don't have the money because that's the thing, they can help you having a field day. I mean, for you to commit to come in this day. So, I mean, either way, it's all the worst that they're saying that they don't have time to do.
We were talking with someone else about in general, creating a contract just between us and even all the parents that are paying, saying, "I'm going to give some kind of time and effort." Because at every level, we are volunteering. So, it's not really fair for these volunteers to spend five hundred hours and these volunteers to fill up before the game.
But you're going to have to be able to pull the kids if the parent doesn't do it. So, that's got to be the thing. It's like your registration nature, so it has to be...
I've got a question here in the back of the room.
So, mine is not really a question. I'm a parent from Bronson Youth Sports. This is our first season for my kids playing soccer in Bronson. We originally came from Williston team. We bought off in Bronson. Our kids are going to attend Bronson schools next year. We wanted our kids to be able to make friends in Bronson before they transfer schools from Williston schools. We're like, "Okay, this would be a great way to get to play soccer, make friends." However, you said the grass is not always greener if you don't water it. Well, my experience so far is the grass is not green in Bronson. It needs a lot of love. Some things I've heard from other parents, and I'm just going to vocalize some concerns I've heard from other parents without saying any names, is a lot of parents are not stepping up to help because they feel like there's a lot of screaming and animosity coming from you. They feel like there is a lot of hostility from the directors and the board of DYS. Some things that I have noticed, you know, I don't have time to say those things, coach. And that's not for me. But one thing I have noticed, and I'm just going to be honest about it, two weeks ago, our kids played against Alachua and after halftime, you were in there tree-talking and the mom that helps out was my daughter's A U team. She was watching her kids and the Alachua coach is on the field. Blue, come on, Blue. Now, he stepped up and he's pushing our team and you're under a tree.
So, I was...
So, why?
Because I am the director and I'm also there on the field and because...
But under what situation does a coach from another team coach our children?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, he was not coaching. I was there. Emma was standing, my assistant that she's referring to was standing there. And to be honest, it was a rough game. The other kids knew how to pass. It was really hard. We were losing.
I know that it was rough. My daughter got clobbered into the field all of a sudden.
And also, the other team backed down and they said, "We're not going to try to score you." Okay? The kids would not move. We were telling them, "Move up, move up, guys. Move up to the halfway line." Emma finally said, "Come to me. Just, just come to me, guys." They were not listening to us. It was not that the other coach was directing us, it's that they were not responding. We did the best we could to finish that game. It was very obvious the other team was out matching us. We played the best we could. Yes, I was under a tree. Again, I am in a spot where I'm coaching four soccer teams. Okay? So, yes, while that was happening, I had people asking me, "We have a game at three o'clock or whatever the day. Where is that going to happen?" This is happening. We also have baseball and softball games happening elsewhere. People are asking me questions. I cannot just ignore my phone. People tell me all the time, "Just ignore your phone. Go to that..."
I see it for last week's game when you and Emma were sitting on the bench during the game and you were on your phone texting while the game was playing.
Again, ma'am, that was at two fifteen. My fourteen-year game was starting at three. They were there to warm up and I wasn't even able to go to the next game. That is the point. We need more volunteers so that my...
I can understand that, hence. I would like to say this about the whole situation. This is the same situation that we dealt with years and years later.
Right.
And it never changes. It never changes.
You bet it is.
And I want to do, and I want to say this, we're losing focus of what we're trying to do. Okay? And the focus is, I've been to games in Williston, I've been to games in Trenton, I've been to all these out here. I come out there on a regular basis with y'all. We're sitting out there all the time. And there's a lot of good going on. Yes. Do we need to improve? For sure. Anybody that tell you that we've got the best of everything, that's a problem. They get flattered. If you want to make an improvement, get involved, okay? And the best way to make an improvement is for people to work together for the good of the best. And with that being said, I don't want your job. Forty years ago, I did this, okay?
Sir, we want other people to step up. We don't want to do this job anymore. It is a rotating board that's supposed to get people in. People aren't coming in. They want to make complaints. I'm sorry, we've been having soccer since the beginning of the season and this is the first time that this press release letter has even approached me or said anything. Now, I...
The best thing I want to do about these things here is communication, okay? If you'll sit down and talk about things, if you've got, if you've got something legitimate that you have, just address, you know, let's talk about it. Working it's hard.
I just like to work together. That's my, that's my...
And that's the best way I can, I can, if anybody else can board anything, well, I guess.
So, is there, so you were saying that there was somebody else that was willing to take over the DYS? But is there a date where they expire? And if so, is there a way that we can have an application process that's set up for people that are there to want to apply?
But that's fine. Why are we going to continue to build Bronson and build something? I mean, it was hard. When it was BYL and it went to BPR, it was hard starting over.
You just...
When it went from BPR to DYS. No, I want somebody to step in and be part of this nonprofit.
But there are people that don't want to be a part of it because you and your husband are a part of it.
But, so, I'm sorry, I feel like that's completely wrong. That we said community.
It's the absolute truth. There are people that don't want to be a part of it.
But the purpose of the organization is for it to be for the youth and you have nothing to do with us.
All right, all right.
It's a very hard organization with a board.
Okay. We have a, we have an impasse here and the impasse is we got people who have different opinions. That's the...
Matt, Matt Alston wants to take over? Can I find out who that person is?
And we, we should have an application process so that we can go over and you can apply too.
But that defeats the purpose of our contract that was initially continuing for the purpose of building a community program for Bronson.
Well, I do, we have a community program that already worked, but you had, you're saying complaints and then it was like, "We're just going to do away with it and we're going to ask somebody else." But, uh, BPR worked.
Yes, but I'm a part of BPR. This council is the one that dissolved BPR.
No, not this council because I wasn't here and I didn't want it.
I was a part of BPR. When BPR ended, I was a part of BPR.
At the end of the day, with this being a government organization, when your contract comes up, regardless of what they want, what you want, what anybody else wants, every single person that has a group that wants to apply has the right to come up with a request.
Right.
So, the continuing Angela, I'm going to be forever listen to what I'm saying. Regardless of feelings or not, this is a government and it's a municipality, anytime, whether the sport, fire, her, then anybody, has the right to come in and say, "Hey, we take a contract coming in. Your contract ends every couple of years." Anybody has the right to come in and say, "Hey, for whatever reason, I'd like to take a shot."
That's the thing. It doesn't end. It's continuous unless you guys give us a sixty days notice saying you want to end it.
And if we have other people come up, they have an opportunity. At the end of that contract, that's a rolling con, sixty days, people can come in and take an opportunity.
Well, right, that's my point. But so then, we have to reinvest in it. So, what is to keep us reinvesting? If you guys don't have faith and you're just going to turn it over to somebody else...
If it's about the kids and it's a new issue, if you have people in the community that would like...
We're losing it somehow. We're already losing, I'm sorry, we're not...
I have my...
Ma'am, your children paid a day for us last weekend.
No, not last week, not last.
No, not this year, but one year ago.
Right, because they asked them to. They asked them to.
Anyway, regardless, if you guys are intended to end the contract...
That's not what she's saying. What she's saying is because we're the government, they have the right to do that. You have to write to reapply and then they make a decision. So, it's not saying that we just don't wait six days to just kick you out. You have to write and say, "I want to continue this."
All the kids that you have affected positively will not change, no matter what we do. You still have affected whatever...
People are really, people are fine and they only care about football and that's the only reason. So, it, that is up to you guys. Please let us know as soon as possible if you do intend on making a change because we are trying to build for things. And I don't want to plan for a spring season that's not happening, that's not, I mean, you have to play this stuff ahead of time, so...
Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, 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 wait. Little lady asked you all for some fun, for some money. She asked you for something. Every year I watch this outfit, you don't do nothing.
No, every year, every year, every year.
You're wrong.
Every year, every year, every year.
Just like the year with it, they wouldn't buy the background checks. They did purchase other things that we requested.
For the past two years, since me and Sue have been here, every time Angela has come to this council and asked us stuff, she has gotten a hundred percent of what she has wanted, every single time.
Yes, for the last two years.
And I know that for months, I've got that check.
She asked for some money for background checks.
That was, that was... In the past few years, she has not come back with this.
All right, well, we asked that question and now, what we going to do?
Well, first of all, can we let council...
Can we do it on that?
We're going to, but let council...
I'd like to speak about a couple of issues that have brought them, me, what she already said, two of them, is that there was some hostility going around and lack of communication, I guess, parents texting, whatever, not getting responses about sign-ups, practices or not. And then, the other issue, the money. How to do, how many, how much money have we had left over that they have not used?
They use all the money every year.
Did they use all the money?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good.
Now, legitimately, it is for your insurance. They are, they are buying what they are supposed to be buying and it is across the board for all your sports equipment, it's for your insurance. Angela is right. It is not, it is not cheap the things they have.
Insurance like that though, it's...
And that is every year, it covers everything. And when you're in Act Four, you pay so much per team.
Yes.
So, it is expensive. The money that you guys have allocated is being used directly for those teams, directly what it is for.
Well, yeah.
Well, I was not here when I did the tier system for the money and I personally don't like it. So, if you need money to run a better shift, all you got to do is ask.
Do it now.
I'm, that's something for budget time, that's something for budget time, but I don't like the tier system the way it is now. And if it takes more money, because I know, personally, I know of ten-plus kids that have left and went to Williston, Cheeplin, Tri-County, whatever it's called over there in Cheeplin. And for multiple reasons, some with the hostility, some they just said it was run like crap. It was just a whole bunch of different things. And if it takes more money to get it where we back, because back when I played, I'm only twenty-three, so I played ten, twelve years ago. I remember having two baseball teams for each age group, two basketball teams for each age group, tackle football. We had soccer that we were winning championships. We were doing everything and we had, I don't know how many kids.
You got a lot of complaints. You got complaints regardless. Yeah, yeah. So, you're not giving your twenty plus years, you have complaints for everything.
You're going to get complaints no matter what you do. You can never make anybody happy. If you do, God be with you because you're amazing. But if it, I mean, something's got to happen so we can quit losing kids of the community.
I appreciate that. We try not to ask if we don't need it.
Because I would like my kids to be able to play and if I ever have kids, not looking good at this point, but if I ever have kids, I would like for them to be able to play I would like for them to be able to play for Bronson Youth Sports or whatever it's called at that time. But the way it's being run now, I don't, I mean, I just...
That's the thing.
I want them to get to Williston.
I love that.
We live in Bronson and Bronson is our home. We want our kids to be in Bronson Sports and play in Bronson.
We do need people to step up, because like I said, I'm coaching out of all those teams, I'm coaching four of those teams. Yes, I have some assistants, but there's nobody that has said, I will be there. You don't have to be there. I still, I'm the head coach listed on Bronson's head coach because they won't step up.
Can I make a suggestion?
Just in the baseball.
Angela, I've known you for 21 years. If you're gonna be the director, don't coach. And you know, but listen, hold on, and the reason I say that is because then when you have parents complain, we don't have a field, we don't have people, we don't have coaches.
We were going to do that this season and then standing there, what am I supposed to do when you have 88 kids in a program and every team that you look at and said, I need a coach for, you got crickets? I mean, what are you supposed to do? Am I supposed to tell those kids to go to another program? Because if I don't find my glass...
I can say now, Cheeplin, my two kids play there and they can't find coaches.
Yeah.
But that's just, I mean...
I don't mean it. It's just passion.
And we were backed out. Come budget time, I would like to even ask you for more money.
I appreciate that.
A lot, a lot of people don't coach because they want, they expect pay, but, and you as a coach, I expect, I do it for the kids. And that's why you're not having a lot of people, a lot of tiers to be coached.
And when Reggie volunteered, I took his help and I tried to get him to come help this season, but it was already offered.
I would achieve it.
But that's it. What am I supposed to do? Even the adults, they, they don't want...
I would achieve it because it's more organizational there. It's more organized.
That's the thing. The chance I'll be talking to. We, we are providing the teams, we're providing the insurance. I got the old gym, we got the new gym.
Well, I'm real organized. Need somebody organized in your office? I can help you. I'm real organized. Now we're just school board, huh? You need an Excel spreadsheet? I got you.
I agree. I'll take advantage of that. Gonna make a, an Excel spreadsheet that's pretty important.
But it will take things like order a uniform off every... It will take things like... I'm sure we have coverage for that. I can tell you from a school standpoint, what we ended up doing towards the end was like, for example, during basketball season, the basketball team worked to perfection. And so we would buy the, they could use their own stuff, you have to buy nothing and that's the way it was. And so then that way, you didn't have to worry about covering. So there's gotta be some connection that we gotta make to make sure that those things get done. Then that's one less thing off of you. Then, you know, you, you pay the custodian to do the cleanup. Then for basketball, all you gotta do is just arrive there.
I agree.
That's the same thing with the individual, the, that's the same thing with the individual implementation. If somebody is asking you for something, then they're obviously gonna be helping to something, that it's gonna take something else off of your plate.
I agree. I understand that. I will definitely take those advice and things like that. I just wanted to give you this because I know it was brought up about the school that we did clean and I just want to show that was the checklist that we give to everybody. So if ever there's a problem in something that we do and people aren't following and it's being left in that and somebody complains about it, I need to know so that I can correct it because...
So right, so as I was trying to, when we were emailing, I didn't know about this until after it was already gone. But what they, what they've already said was for anybody, because it's like, we have another organization that uses the gym as well. You gonna have to pay for a custodian to clean it so that the group, then we have to worry about that. But that's, that's a problem that, plus, that's another thing you don't have to worry about.
I totally understand. I just wanted to give you know that that is the list that I gave you here.
And it was usually Angela, myself, Scott, kids that volunteer or play basketball. We stay two hours after the last day it's cleaned up.
Yeah, but it's, it's a lot. Somebody who does it two or three times a week, I can tell you, it's a lot. So I'll let you know specifically what exactly has to be done to have somebody that's doing it. That's why it's easier to just pay somebody and let them do it. Then you don't have to worry about it.
And that's what we tried to do the first year, but they refused to do that. They, they didn't want to be drawn in again or something. So we just got by and do this.
Well, that's taken care of.
Yeah, I told you that, but I wanted you to know that is our checklist. If you see something missing, please let me know, because that was what everybody's supposed to do online.
All right.
Thanks, Angela.
Thank you. So here's my question. So my question is, based on, again, you have the letters that we've received from, they all wanted to be anonymous, they, because these are people that work directly with David and Angela, they didn't want to put their names on these letters. But with all this information and everything that was said tonight, do you want us to go back out and rebid this? Whatever timeframe. Again, we would need to give them 60 days notice prior to February 3rd of 2024. So, you know, do you guys want to go back out to bid and look for somebody else or are you happy with the way things are? Because again, I need to be able to go back to the person who would like to take this over and explain exactly what the council would like to do at this point.
Here, here's my issue with that. Here's, here's my comment. It don't matter who take it over, who runs it, you still gonna have problems. And so I think that that's what people are missing, is like whether it be BYL, BPR, V what?
BYL.
Whatever you call it, it's always gonna be problems because that's just the way it works. Especially when you're doing volunteer stuff and you're not paying me.
Yeah, maybe.
So either way, you got, you, you'll have parents that's gonna complain about your registration, but you didn't registration for six weeks and nobody signed up. But then the second you say you ain't taking no more kids, then you got five people that call you. That's just gonna be the bottom of the thing. So even if you got somebody who knows how to run stuff, I know how to run stuff, and so it, well, you still had complaints. So that's not gonna change based on what it is, but what I would say is that you gonna have to learn to walk away. So when it gets to a point, because when you're passionate about things and people come at you and they don't realize that you just stayed up till 12 o'clock at night doing things, you gonna have to learn to walk away, because when you come off and you fly off on somebody, that's all they remember, is that you flew off on somebody. So what we have at the school is like, you wanna talk to a coach or you wanna talk to a person, you gotta give them 24 hours. You, you can't talk to me right now while I'm in the middle of doing something. You can make an appointment or you can come see me tomorrow after practice. You're gonna have to have policies like that. It doesn't matter who does it. So then they can address their complaints with you. They don't ever address it with you and you don't know nothing about it. Ain't nothing you can do about that. So, I mean, we can work on the, the other stuff piece at a time, but it doesn't matter who takes over. You, you could, you could put somebody else in it. The end of the year, you gonna have the same complaint, just from different people.
So I can vouch for her. She just added two new board members to Bronson Youth Sports. And we have it cushioned where certain teams only go to a word for members, so it's not all on her.
Forgive me, because yes, I, and people are taking the cost of...
So you have board members, you have like, you talking about like secretary, chairman, member?
I'm also a coach for fourteen and under soccer. So on some of the, um, baseball teams, if they're having issues, they'll come to me versus to her, so I'm lighting in her.
It's like commissioner work, but we can't, we haven't found anybody who's willing to do the full responsibility.
For our whole sport?
Yeah.
So it's more like...
And people can discuss their concerns with baseball and things with her rather than come to me. That way they don't feel like that. Because if I'm unapproachable, then it's not gonna do good for them to feel comfortable.
So they have multiple people now that votes it just right?
Well, one thing I would suggest is, um, go to the colleges, because I graduated from sports administration and I had to do an internship.
I have reached out to...
And, you know, an internship, you do get the students and they come in and you have to work.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement here on something that we need to do here, and that is be, first of all, just like Sherry just said, 24 hours. But we gonna do it two weeks, about that, or four weeks. The Sherry is now over at Parks and Recreation.
Congratulations.
Good luck now, Sherry. She came and said, you want me to do the parks, I'll do it.
She already over at the park.
Just sit down and y'all talk this thing and you figure out what, where we got the problems at, okay? And then, and then just come back in two weeks or, or 30 days, whatever, next time we have a meeting, when it, when we... Sherry, you can do it on me, come in with some policy. I agree with her 100%, but I sit right here and watch that man, Matt, you're in the background, almost pull all his hair out.
Can we do this after soccer season? We only have a couple more weeks, like towards the end.
Y'all, y'all, that's, there you go, there.
There's games happening and practices happening to not...
Like right now, yeah.
That's, we have a reason. I'm sorry we don't come in front of you guys often, but there's always games, there's always practice, there's always something.
There's at least a soccer prize this Monday, Friday.
I understand, I understand.
So we'll reconvene at the first meeting in June. It'll give you guys time to, again, look through the letters. If I have concerns in the meantime, can I send them to the board then? Can you give me the board member contact information?
Yeah, we can give you the information.
Do you have meetings?
Yes, we do have meetings. Uh, we actually have one coming in June that I had told Sue I would forward her the information, the date, time, and place. Because yes, we do have meetings. We're involved from model 1C3. It's running for the youth and the community.
Okay. All right. Is that, is that a real one?
Yeah.
You good with that? Okay. It's about the kids. Always think about the kids. That's what we're here about. So, um, you say you got anything else?
I'm done. That's enough.
You have said enough. Curtis.
I'm done.
You can, you can, we got another quote that they brought in back for the awarding program. The second quarter, they got a lot, it's almost $35,000, $4,000 cheaper. They got the other quote for somebody to deal with for the ground market, you know what I mean, and it's buying. And it is the second quote, the cheap quote for the award. Tony said he would come down, I talked to the guy today, that he would bring up while we waiting on ours coming in, they're coming with one of us. So it's how you do this. Watch your little guy, that shit, man.
So which one do you, uh...
I have no preference. I talked to, um, Randy, I talked to Todd, and the quote that's cheaper, I would, would buy.
So you're talking about the rebuilds, right? Oh, I'm sorry. What are we talking about? I'm sorry, water, your water pump, sorry.
For the lift station.
We were, sorry.
So we have, we have funds to...
We would be using ARPA funds for this, yes. So again, we've gone out to bid twice on this and we advertise in Gainesville, Jacksonville, Orlando, Tallahassee, and Tampa. These are the only two quotes that we're getting. So it's...
I'll let them merge in on this.
So Curtis, which one do you want? The less expensive one?
War Street, yeah. The second, I don't know. I don't have a problem with the second quote, the cheap quote, I agree with that.
So you're talking about Florida pumping solutions?
What's, what's, what's your concern? Tell us your weakness. This is, I don't have a problem with anything.
Since it's gonna be $4,000 cheaper, um, I got another quote for the fixing of the, uh, 2008 Ford, the motor.
No, 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 no. We, go back to that pump. You, listen, I think it's confusing. What, what do you, which one of these?
I'm, I'm, I'm the leading one.
Either one of them. You're buying them.
They're comparable, Curtis? I mean, these are comparable pumps?
Yeah, I talked to Randy about the second one. I had talked to him about the first one, what we did originally, and that was good. He looked at the space. I sent him the, uh, the space on this one and he said it would work.
Okay.
We got ARPA money, I assume?
Yes. We have more.
Yeah. Something good to have. Or something.
Hey Curtis, can you just explain what it is you're using these for, for our new council?
Yeah, we have a lift station that don't have generators. Um, like our main lift station on Stevens Street, it doesn't have a generator. Everything within the city has to go through Stevens Street Lift Station. So this de-watering pump will be able to hook up to that lift station and send it onto the sewer plant. And now we would have to get a truck to come keep pumping it out. Say like the other night, the power went out. If we was without power, you know, for a century period of time, a couple of days, then that lift station, Stevens Street, we would have to either have Jones, Seth, and Cobb continue to pump it out or use this de-watering pump, hook up to that lift station and send the waste over to the sewer plant.
I'll give you the example. During the hurricane, when the hurricane came through here, we were out working for a few days. Jones, Seth, and Dan was over here, how many times? Three or four times and, and they charged and they controlled it and now it's not.
And this will, you know...
They get from water leaks, dude. We get a big water leak, we need to move a lot of water.
We can use it. And also, we have a lot of lift stations, say for example, um, the health department has a generator, but the marathon, the, the old marathon, they don't have a lift station, I mean, generator.
Give us all the...
There's a couple of lift stations, Marcus Street don't have a generator. Cobb Street, Hardest Street don't have a generator. So in rebuilding, um, Hardest Street, that involves the elementary school. So all the waste that comes from the elementary school go through the Hardest Street Lift Station.
And a lot of the amount of body on what a generator would cost for one of them. Just one of them.
Most generators are on three phase and they want, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
$150.
And this, you got, this is including hoses and stuff, you're right, like...
All right, I talked to the guy, hoses are like two or three hundred dollars.
Okay, so you can just... Okay. I make a motion. We accept a bid for water pump solutions of $46,440. And I'm backing Department of Moon and Shake. All those in favor, signature five percent high? All right. All right. Six.
2008 Ford, the motors is gone.
You did it.
And this is the thing, um, we don't know when we gonna get it done with trucks. And right now, my truck and the MA work crew truck is the only vehicle that, if we had to go to Cal, anywhere, I don't think I'll be trucking later on.
I'm not gonna.
This motor truck and this, the Ford Ranger, the only of the two vehicles that we have. And we don't know when we gonna get the trucks from, to stay good.
Yeah.
It's not selling promising, right?
And, uh, we're still in the war. That's a, that's the world we live in, right?
So you, so we need to have, you got long scale.
How, how much money did this?
This is nine, but Bronson Lube is like eight something.
So Bronson Lube was 88.71 for a rebuild and 69.50 for a used.
But we, we sent, we sent it over to our truck just to make sure the motor was blown, just because it was the amount of money that was just...
Right.
And they confirmed it, so we can, I'd rather go with Bronson Lube business or...
Well, I believe one more quote, um, I'm waiting on the first to give that quote.
Okay.
So you still want to wait till you get a third one?
All right, I'll work. You have a third one?
What?
Anything else?
No, I just appreciate, I appreciate all this stuff. The council involved me to give it. It's not like, you know, getting a bunch of stuff. The first couple of years, I didn't know what I needed, you know, getting a bunch of stuff that you don't know if you needed it or not. That wasn't an option. I didn't want to do that route. Now that I know the stuff that we need, now I know the parts and the tools, so that's why, you know, the list up there has grown, you know, for getting grinder parts. I had, Tim, the Tim came here today, you know, with the grinder parts stations, next week we could put in two or three, because all of our parts are past today, you know, they only have a year mark, about a year eight, something. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Curtis. And tell the crews that we said thank you for their responses weekend. We had a situation on Sunday and, uh, like I say, it was, we had a few people calling in, but it was taken care of, so. Dennis?
I need a minute to chop that. Um, I talked to the contractor today. He'll be here Wednesday to chop up the concrete to try to fix that water leak that we got. Commence the weekend. Um, Mark is gonna be out there still the next few days getting stuff done, uh, touring it out more of the roads. I really want to thank the crews of the city for all the work that they did to help get all that out there, because them guys just drug and drug and drug. And the guys from the city, our crews here just busted their butt to get that, so it looked good for the ribbon cutting. And I want to thank all y'all for coming and everybody in the public for coming, because it's a bigger, it's a big thing for us and hopefully we'll get on to bigger and better things. Our engine should be here, the first, according to email, we got first or second week of July. So, but I just wanted to give you an update on that. And congratulations to the newly elected. Uh, I definitely want to sit down with, with you, let you update y'all where we're at. I gotta do the same thing to Tyler.
Squad.
What?
Squad. We got two trucks, right?
Yes, that, we're still working on the squad truck. We got, we found one that shouldn't be on, on the ground May, the end of May. But we got the contractor and the, uh, the stew in the bed and the dealer working together to try to coordinate that stuff together. So that's hopefully June, July timeframe too. So, and that's on, that's on the state contract, so we have to go, go up to that. But it's taken months to find one. So, unless anybody else has any questions?
And they start on the roof?
Tomorrow.
Yes.
My group. I told the dentist, he said you're gonna take the heat, um, because he had asked me about the stacks that's up in the roof that he, that we want them to remove. So the heat is going, so I'm gonna tell him, go ahead and take the stacks out, because I mean, that's just something I'd have to work around.
That's fine. Yeah, the two, the two new heaters that we put in the last two beds are going to be...
So they're going for you? There would be no heat in there? Is that, there'll be no heat in there? Is that what we're trying to say?
Say again. Yeah, you won't have none in this, in the last two, in the last section of this. That was the original plan, because those things, when we bought them, I mean, we can always look at replacing them and leave those if it's gonna run in, you know, into, into some funding money, but I mean, we could, we can look at them.
I mean, the stuff's outside at the park right now, so it's gonna be, at least it's inside, you know?
No, you need heaters.
I don't mean if they're there, I would like for them to stay, if you never, I mean...
I mean, I have, I have not run the heaters, but by statute, I have to have them in the firehouse, keep firecracks.
The heat for here is not, this building is different.
It's the inside and the...
Yeah, you're talking about the base.
I don't want to make sense because they get cold.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one's a hang in the bag.
No, 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 no.
Because the moving truck, they wanted to remove them, if they could, you know, instead of try to...
Go around.
Yeah, go around them, so that the heat is on the table, so I won't tell the guy to keep going.
Gotcha.
I mean, I'm, other options, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to leave and we're putting one of the other one, just not a big deal.
No, it's fine, it's fine. And Curtis is gonna work on getting, um, some quotes for gutters, because I actually talked to Charlie about that anyway.
Okay.
So we do need to gutters here.
Get some quotes for heaters, you might get some new ones.
We're gonna be going to connect the, uh, well to the, uh, irrigation system and the new fire station.
Yeah, that's actually connected. Yeah, that's actually connected. The, there's a pipe. If you noticed when you were out there Saturday, there's a pile of dirt right there on the, uh, concrete by the corner of the building there. They had a line that goes from where they connected in to tie it in. The, there's a plant in there and that plant blew apart. So now they got to go, they got to pick the concrete up and repair that and re-concrete.
So when is that going to happen?
Uh, they'll be out there Wednesday for that.
So then you'll have an irrigation system. Let's see. Not an irrigation, sprinkler. The sprinkler system on, yeah.
Yeah, right. And then, then they'll have to retest and go through all the tests and all that again and make sure they have no other leaks anywhere else.
That's a big factor in not being able to move in it, isn't it?
That's correct. That's a big factor for the CEO.
So you should have break that on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't fool him on that.
Yeah, he told, he told me that he would be here Wednesday and then I'll have to.
That's the world we live in today.
Yeah. And then I went out to Florida to have it retested with the sprinkler company and the well guys because they have to do it together. And, uh, to make sure that, uh, it's repaired and without any issues. So it won't be long. That's all I have.
We're still close.
We're still close.
Okay.
Victoria Warren.
What you need now is a long speech for me. No.
Yeah, you're good. All right, uh, committee reports, uh, since we've shuffled the deck, uh, I will go first on mine. We, again, we had a little issue on the weekend. The guy responded. Everything's good. Water and sewer is, y'all heard about that tonight? We, all we need is more people hooked up and more things and a miracle, so to say. So, uh, I'm not a miracle maker, but I'm working on trying to find us funding and all this stuff. So anyhow. Uh, Tyler, you got anything?
Nope.
Well, that was weird. Well, next meeting. Uh, Ms. Sherry?
No.
Ms. Virginia?
No, sir.
Mr. Franklin?
You can, no. Did I do your motion to pay the bills?
Public.
Excuse me, we have public.
I'm going to say this. I'm very disappointed, unhappy. What I'm about to say to have the people here, uh, let me make sure and tell us, is that this voting thing has been going the other way for years. And I can't understand why tonight it had to change. But we're going to go with that position. It's not hard for me to get eighty people to remove somebody. And that's what I want to do. Meet that gentleman, that was that, that is number, and blame it on you. We're going to work on that because I'm not a man. I don't know.
All right, anybody else?
Actually, I will come over. I just wanted to congratulate you guys. I have to say, I got very scared earlier when everybody started fighting and wobbling and everything. Um, it came back to, the memory came back to the very first meeting I had here when these guys that you get, that you replaced by, just walked out. There was a huge commotion. I had no clue what was going on and I was wondering, what the heck is happening here? Do I want to be part of this? I have to say. And today it suddenly started saying, thinking, oh my God, am I getting to that? It's not about a gang. It's not about you. It's about Bronson. And I wish there were more people that were here that had stayed until the end. They only come when they're interested. They don't come to see what is happening. I moved in 2020. I wanted to know what makes this city tick. It says Bronson on my address. I want to be proud of it. And having those arguments like that does not make me happy. Doesn't make my heart happy. Does not give us any good feeling. So whatever some people want, well, I know you're disappointed. I'm sorry. You're disappointed. Everybody, you're disappointed. You're not happy. You know what? Things happen. Like you said, may you didn't know? I actually didn't know that you guys were related. Um, I think that when you guys were sitting here, it remained very civil. It remained, um, you know, whatever you, you did not, you were not family members when you were seated here. You were council members. I would hope the same thing for Ms. Sherry and for Mr. Franklin. I would hope the exact same thing. Now, my thing is, we didn't know. Now we know. Let's move on. Let's add. Maybe we won't find anything and this time, this year you won't be mayor. Maybe next year you will be. And that's, that's something we'll, we'll have to think about. I mean, we have to go forward and, and look at things positive rather than keep on being unhappy and looking negative. So I, I just wanted to come, you know, add to what I said earlier, congratulate all of you. And, um, looking forward to being on one of those little thingies that you get and, and, and make them, them go on. And hopefully I see you will go and get to be here on the map.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second. Form a move to second. Those in favor, signature five of state high. Pose, same, pose secured.